Good evening, everyone, and for those who are here in our council chambers on the first floor for the first time, welcome. What do you guys think? Pretty good? Thanks. Although maybe we need more seats. We got a full house already. Must be, everybody wants to say they were here than the very first meeting, right? Maybe, maybe not. And you'll notice that the height of the dais here has been moved down a little bit so you can get a better idea of who we are and target us. No, maybe not. But thank you very much. And today is May 13th, 2025. For the record, this is a City of Prescott City Council voting meeting. And we'll start with introductions and announcements, Mayor Protam.
And I have them. Hang on one second. They came in late. Sorry about that.
Okay, here we go. Join us May 16th for the 20th Annual Ride to City Hall. Bring your bike for a short, two-mile, family-friendly bike ride from 1500 West Gurley Street behind Casa Sanchez to the Prescott City Hall at 201 North Montezuma Street. Once at City Hall, enjoy some juice, coffee, and donuts, and get a chance to meet the city council, PBTAC, and PAT members. The ride will begin promptly at 7:15 in the morning to minimize any traffic conflicts. All bikes and riders are welcome. To ensure safety, we ask that all riders obey traffic laws and wear a helmet. For more information, visit Prescott Bike Month on Facebook. We hope to see you all and your wheels there. Let's see, the next one is the City of Prescott is excited to announce our new appointment-based bulk program. Does that sound right? Appointment-based, okay, for picking up bulk trash, I'm sorry. Each residential trash customer qualifies for one complimentary collection per calendar year. Pre-registration is required and will begin June 2nd, 2025. The new appointment-based bulk collection is easy as one, two, three. Register online for your pickup at presketercycles.com. Get confirmation and instructions from our team. Set out your items by 6:00 a.m. on your scheduled date. Commercial businesses and communities on dumpster service are not eligible for this service. For information, please go to presketercycles.com. And the final item is the city council Subcommittee on Appointments is currently seeking applications from citizens who are interested in serving on the following city boards and commissions and committees. We need people for the Building, Safety, Advisory, and Appeals Board, the Fire Board of Appeals, the Tourism Advisory Committee. Boards and commissions and committees provide opportunities for citizens to take an active role in their local government. Applications are due to the city by 5:00 o'clock on Friday, May 30th, 2025. For more information, visit the city's website at City of Prescott Boards, Commissions, and Committee vacancies, or contact the city clerk's office at 928-777-1437. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Susan Shanerman from Temple Brith Shalom, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mayor Protam Kante Kantelmi.
Mayor Good and council members, thank you all for allowing me to offer this prayer as a representative of Temple Brith Shalom, the largest synagogue in the Quad Cities. We have over 115 family units. We welcome you to a Friday night Shabbat service anytime. Spirit of life and love, divine spirit which resides in all, we do not always understand each other. We do not always speak or listen carefully. We often find it difficult to look beyond ourselves to our common purpose, and we cause suffering to each other and ourselves. In this time together, let us be reminded that we seek to understand each other. We seek to speak to each other in truth with compassion. We seek to listen to each other in love with caring. We seek the common good and a life lived in accord with our highest aspirations. We call upon the living spirit in each of us to make it so. Am Yisrael Chai, and let us say amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin the meeting here with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protam Kantelmi. Your Councilman Gumboji.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Freworth is excused from the meeting.
We have three presentations scheduled. The first one will be the annual update and presentation from Yavapai College.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Mr. Jenkins.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And I actually really like your new digs. So I want to talk a little bit about what's been going on at Yavapai College, but I want to start out by showing you guys a video that gives you a comprehensive view of what we've been doing and how we've grown at the college. So if you could roll tape. So we are considered a comprehensive community college with over 90 associate degree programs. We are at five bachelor's degree programs, and we're going to be adding one new, at least one new every year. We have, we'll be adding computer science, and we will be, we will know at the end of this week through our Higher Learning Commission, we will be the first community college in the country to offer a 92-credit bachelor's degree. So that's a three-year bachelor's degree, helping folks get into the workforce even faster. Not to mention the fact that we are about $104 a credit hour. Our university friends average about $678 a credit hour. We are accredited by the same body. Our credential, our staff and faculty have the same credentials. So, but they're paying six times more for a similar degree. So I tell parents to save that money, kick the kids out of your house because we have resident halls on campus, and take a couple of cruises while the kids are studying on campus. This year, we graduated 1,250 students. We added 60 bachelor's degree graduates this year. Ninety-six percent of our students stay in our county after graduation. Our nursing program, which we have two nursing pennies every year, 92% of those folks stay in our county after graduation. 96% are on the job within 30 days after graduation. So our people stay local. The video talked about a camp, Prescott Pines. We will have an open house, May 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00. All are invited. Everybody in the community can come. One hot dog per person. And the pines purchased was largely to help us reduce our need for housing for both faculty and students. Right now, we have 27 students and 14 employees living at the camp. Once it's completed, we'll have up to 100 beds available for faculty and staff. So we're very proud of what we're doing. We didn't raise taxes this year, Mayor. Our goal is to not raise taxes next year. And so, but the challenge, and I'll say this out loud, the challenge right now is all of the federal cuts are really pinching us pretty tightly. We're trying to do whatever we can to not have to lay off employees when we lose funding from federal programs. But I don't want to end on a negative note. I'm open to take any of your questions.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Rodney, I just want to thank you for your presentation. Ted and Dallin and I had the privilege of doing the non-video part of the presentation a couple months back in person. And it's, I think it's easy for residents who've lived in Prescott for a long time to have missed how comprehensive Yavapai College's offerings have become over the past few years. So thank you to you and to David and Dr. Ryan for all the good work you're doing and keeps getting the word out about what a nice little gem we have in Prescott.
Oh, thank you.
Councilman Gumboji.
Rodney, I wanted to compliment you on your presentation and recognize Yavapai College is a vital member in our community. So thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Yeah, I like those comments, Rodney. And I know that a lot of people kind of have taken Yavapai College for granted just because it's been classified as a community college for so many years. But clearly, you're expanding academic choices and degree programs and things like that. I know when, way back when, when the earth cooled, when I got my degree, it was 120 units. And having a 92-unit bachelor's degree is a real launch for young people's careers. So thanks for everything you're doing there.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, guys.
All right, that brings us to our next presentation for the 2024 Rees Across America. There's a familiar face, our previous city attorney, John Moffett.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is, as the mayor said, is John Moffett. I'm the Assistant State Captain for the Arizona Patriot Guard Riders. PGR is proud to partner every year with Rees Across America in the annual placement of reeds at veterans' gravesites and national cemeteries throughout the country. Our partners in Prescott include the American Legion, the American Legion Riders, the Gold Star Mothers, Walmart, and others, including the City of Prescott. The mission of Rees Across America is to remember the fallen, to honor those who served, and to teach the next generation the value of freedom. Diane Brown, who is Location Coordinator for Rees Across America in Prescott, was enabled to be here today and asked me to present a certificate to the City of Prescott for your continued assistance each year. In December 2024, we placed over 3,100 wreaths at gravesites at the Prescott National Cemetery, which meant we had 3,100 wreaths to dispose of at the end, or the day after, a couple of days after the ceremony. Once again, the City of Prescott kindly waived our dump fee, or your dump fees at the transfer station for these wreaths. All these wreaths are purchased from donations from members of the community, and all the money we raise goes to purchase wreaths. So we don't have any money to pay you. So we appreciate your waiving your dump, uh, transfer, uh, dump fees at the transfer station. Again, I thank you for your assistance and cooperation and look forward to your continued cooperation in the future. And I do have a certificate of appreciation to present.
Thank you very much, John. I'd be happy to accept that. And I know I've been involved in the Rees Across America for quite a number of years. Thank you very much.
And since I have a few minutes left, very briefly, just a reminder, on Memorial Day, May 26th, Prescott National Cemetery will begin to have, again, be having its annual Memorial Day ceremonies. The ceremony started 11:00 a.m. sharp. There will be no parking at Prescott National Cemetery for the public. They have to park at Yavapai Community College, which has offered their parking lot for us again this year. The shuttles, free shuttles from Yavapai Community College will be leaving to go to Prescott National Cemetery, starting at 9:00 a.m., with the last shuttle leaving at 10:30 a.m. So we hope to see a good turnout. I know Mayor's going to be there. Hope to see lots of you there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, the next presentation is for the 2024 Firefighter of the Year, Jordan Plummer, and the 2024 Paramedic of the Year, Robert Frias.
Mayor and council, it's my honor every year to stand in front of you and present to you the firefighter and the paramedic of the year for Prescott Fire. The unique piece of this award is this is a nomination by peers, and so it has special weight and special meaning in terms of what we present. And without further ado, I'd like to have Robert Frias join me up here to present him the Paramedic of the Year Award. And this is one of the rare times that I actually read, because these are really the words of the nominator and not my own. It is both an honor and a privilege to present Robert Frias as Paramedic of the Year. Several key reasons stood out in the nominations that showcased not only his skills as a paramedic, but also his leadership and mentorship within our department. Throughout his career, Robert has consistently exemplified excellence in prehospital medicine, most recently being selected as the EMS Group Coordinator. The nominations for Robert consistently demonstrated a level of professionalism in this important area that is admittedly inspiring. In patient care, Robert handles the most critical situations with a clear mind and a steady hand. Beyond his clinical skills, Robert holds himself to the highest personal standards, continually striving to achieve a high level of performance. But what truly sets Robert apart is his commitment to the growth and development of those around him. He has mentored both new and seasoned paramedic and EMTs. He's always willing to share his knowledge, experience, and time to help others improve. He doesn't just teach, he empowers. His passion for EMS is evident in everything that he does, from his dedication to patient outcomes and his work as our EMS Coordinator, a role he has held for six months but is already making a significant impact in. Most important to me, Robert brings positivity to every shift. His ability to maintain high morale even during challenging situations helps build stronger crews and creates better care environments. That positive energy is contagious, and it reflects well on everyone around him. For these reasons, I am proud to present him as this year's Paramedic of the Year. All right. Now, Captain Plummer? Okay. It is my distinct honor to present Captain Jordan Plummer as this year's Firefighter of the Year. Captain Plummer has demonstrated an extraordinary level of dedication, professionalism, and leadership over the past year. One of his most significant contributions over the past few years has been his leadership in implementing our new incident record management system, a major advancement in how we document, manage, and analyze our operations. Jordan dedicated countless hours, both on and off duty, to ensure the success of this critical project. What makes his efforts even more commendable is that he undertook this work during his first year as a company officer, a role that already comes with a steep learning curve and significant responsibility. Throughout this process, Captain Plummer consistently demonstrated a solutions-driven mindset and a commitment to teamwork. We received ongoing feedback from personnel across multiple departments who praised his collaborative approach and positive leadership style. His efforts ensured not only the technical success of the system rollout, but also a smooth and well-received transition for our teams. As a result of his work, our department is now better equipped to improve efficiency, service delivery, and overall operational readiness, which are direct benefits to the community that we serve. Captain Plummer embodies the highest values of the fire service: selflessness, perseverance, and a deep commitment to continuous improvement. Of particular importance to me is that Captain Plummer is one of our emerging young leaders. We place a lot of faith in our captains as they are the core nucleus of the leadership engine of this department. How our captains lead directly impacts how our residents receive the services that they rely on. I'm pleased to report that with capable and talented leaders such as Captain Plummer, our engine companies are not only well-led now, but will continue to be well into the future. And it is with great pride and full confidence that I present him as the Prescott Fire Department Firefighter of the Year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, you would just want to stay down there, and I can introduce the next item for you. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation for National Police Week, May 12th through the 18th.
I think everybody's going to be very safe for the next few minutes. Well, it's a real honor to be able to read this proclamation for a National Police Week. I know we just had a evening of recognition where the police department received a number of great national accolades, a Lexi Poll, which is an organization- Lexi Poll, which is an organization that recognizes great policing, gave the City of Prescott's Police Department their gold award, and it was well-deserved. National Police Week, May 12 through the 18th, 2025, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated the week of May 12 through 18, 2025, as National Police Week, and May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day, and whereas the police officers of the City of Prescott play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens and visitors, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that police officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the police officers of the City of Prescott have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of our city, regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves, and whereas their selflessness is shared by their families, who willingly accept loved ones' absences on holidays and special occasions so that the community will be protected, and whereas these men and women, by their service and dedicated efforts, have earned the recognition and gratitude of residents and visitors to our city. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, on behalf of the Prescott City Council, in order to acknowledge the dedicated and professional service given by the men and women who, night and day, stand guard in our community, do hereby recognize the week of May 12 through the 18th as National Police Week. Thank you, and I'm sure we all congratulate you, and we're proud for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I asked the mayor, could I say just a few things, because it's such a rare opportunity that we have to honor the men and women in our noble profession, and I accept this on behalf of the men and women of the Prescott Police Department. We have an incredible police department because of the hearts and the character of the men and women who serve 24/7. And I also am very proud to relate you that thanks to the work of our Prescott Police Foundation, I see Sheri in the audience here, who's one of our members, we have four delegates from the Prescott Police Department who are back in Washington, DC, not only honoring the fallen, our friends and family who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for their communities across our country, but they're also honoring and celebrating those that continue to carry on the difficult work that law enforcement is in 2025. So we appreciate the proclamation. We will lower our flag. I think there's a presidential proclamation to lower flags to half-staff on the 15th, and we will take that opportunity during that day to remember the men and women who, like I said, lay down their lives for our country. So, thank you.
I might add, thank you all for supporting the passage of 478, Proposition 478, so our police officers don't have to spend quite as many overtime hours and be able to spend more time with their family and on vacation. So thank, thank you for that, because part of that proposition will support full staffing of our police department. Thanks again.
All right, and we're moving on now to our open call to the public. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulation. Citizens may be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. We do have a few open call cards today, and our first one is from Louise Parker Trengov.
Hello. We own a property that is right opposite the-
Can you lift up the microphone?
Yeah. We own a property that is right opposite the city public parking on Granite. It is also, our tenants are Wild Iris, Fancy That, whatever was, and Plant Prescott Events. And it is getting to the point where the daily racing of vehicles through the, through the garage is so noisy, people can't hear themselves think. I've had people who are on the patio enjoying their coffee saying someone nearly hit them as they were exiting or entering the parking lot. I have called the city, I have reached out to the police, and it just never seems to be enforced. And I thought we had a noise ordinance in this town, and for cars to be making this noise and being so reckless that they're even setting off other car alarms, which then disturbs everybody at our property. I've talked to owners at the Firehouse Plaza, I've talked to other owners around the parking garage. It is an ongoing problem that never seems to stop. I've been to the city, they've said, yes, we've got cameras. I said, well, are they turned on? Do you ever look at them? Because it just seems nobody is ever there. I've called the police department, when there have been children sitting up on the top level of the parking structure, hanging over with their feet over the side, and other children coming up behind them and scaring them that they could actually fall. Nobody comes. We, there were, the, the other day, there was, I thought, finally, the police are here, because there were sirens going off and making all the noise that police vehicles do. It turned out it was a young guy in a white truck with a G license plate. I found out later that apparently you can buy those. So he was making all this racket while another kid was racing around. It generally starts after the schools get out and all weekends. Then, on the weekend, weekends when we have events, 20 to 30 Harley-Davidsons will go into that parking structure, making such a sound, because it echoes everywhere, that they're setting off all the alarms. People on our properties cannot hear themselves think. We have events, there's a wedding, and there's this racket going on. And I just, we just don't know what to do. And then the other day, and it's been happening now for the last couple of weeks, there's a young man that goes up and down the Creek Trail on Granite Creek in a very loud motorized bicycle, and he's going up and down. Again, it's such a noise. I mean, why are we not having anybody monitoring the noise in this town? Because it's ongoing with these loud cars with these tailpipes. You hear it on the streets. I lay in bed at night, I hear them going up and down the roads, because it's so quiet in the town. The minute you hear, minute that it's dark, you can hear so far. And then the other day, a vehicle crashed through the fence where Charlotte Hall Records is, went through their fence, went through the barrier, straight into the creek, onto our property, and damaged property. And apparently, he was never booked. And so who, what, did, our taxpayers had to fix the fence, that the barrier-
You have 30 seconds.
And I just would love to know what the city is going to do about this, because something has to do it before somebody, A, is killed by these kids playing, racing up and down, loving the sound of their tailpipes. So that's all I have to say.
Before I announce the next one, I have two comment cards up here from Marty Varrier and Alvin Burke. I need the blue comment cards, because it's for an agendized item, please. Next one is James Knapp.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and staff. I just wanted to thank Mayor Protem Cantelme for her announcement about our bike to City Hall event happening on Friday, and I wanted to add a couple of words of encouragement. And they were actually inspired by Mayor Protem Cantelme last year, as she participated in the event. When we got back to City Hall, she expressed to me how wonderful it was getting out on her bike early in the morning, in the beautiful weather, the air is so clear and fresh, the birds are singing, everything about spring is happening. It's a wonderful time to be riding a bike around Prescott. The streets are empty, nothing to compete with as far as traffic, and actually, the ride to the ride, to get there by 7:00 AM, is absolutely the best thing you can do in town, and it might just make you remember why you fell in love with Prescott in the first place. And so I encourage you to all come out, get those tires pumped up, and come join us, and meet with your friends and your city leaders, and let's talk about how great Prescott can be for bikes and bicycles in the future. Thank you.
Kathy Rusing.
Kathy Rusing, Prescott, Arizona, Concerned Citizen. Hello. The reason why I'm here is to bring to your attention that our new general plan, Future Land Use Map, has had a major change, and I hope that we have a discussion about this when the general plan is agenda, is on the agenda. I don't know if you're aware that there's been 12 square miles added to the new Future Land Use General Plan. That's about 8,000 acres. And a new growth corridor has been created going up Williamson Valley Road from the area of around Stringfield Ranch, all the way past Outer Loop Road. It includes everything around Granite Oak Estates, American Ranch. It goes west to the boundaries of the Granite Mountain Wilderness Area, and then all the way east to Granite Dells Ranch. So I think that the last time I saw a survey of Yavapai County residents, they wanted to be rural, and I don't think that this is of any benefit to the City of Prescott to have this growth corridor developed. In our general plan, the old general plan, there was impetus to have a growth corridor along 89A and 89, between the airport and Prescott Valley, and to grow reasonably through that area and along that 89A, so we'd have an economic opportunity zone and some hope of commercial services there. But to have a growth corridor out Williamson Valley Road on our map with no discussion, I find somewhat alarming. So in a nutshell, hopefully, we can have this discussion when this is on the agenda. Thank you.
David Segal.
David Segal, Prescott residents, Mayor Phil, council members, good afternoon. Love the new chambers. I did not have the opportunity to speak at the study session earlier, and I'm glad that I didn't, because City Manager made things very, very crystal clear. At what point in time does our city and our city council stop acting like a revolving door for free loans? Now, make no doubt about it, I'm in favor of tourism on any type of level. What I'm not in favor of is a lack of fiduciary responsibility for our city tax dollars. I sat and listened very carefully to everything that was being said, and all of the good people that were in the audience, with regard to the event. I'll make it very clear, I'm actually in favor of the event. I like what it does for our city, I like the recognition it brings, I like the camaraderie. But when they were promoting the fact that it's a win-win-win, that is a misrepresentation. It is a win for the community business owners, it is a win for the vendors, and it is a win for the vendor putting on, I believe their name is Epic Bikes or Epic Rides. It is a lose for those of us who do not have businesses and do not derive a benefit from tourism here. At what point in time, with everybody on this dais, who I know each and every one of you has business backgrounds, I would doubt very seriously that any one of you in your personal and professional businesses would say to a client or prospective customer, sure, go ahead, give out free money, without expecting a return on investment? That is a deficit that is damaging to our budget. We're facing a shortfall right now for Prop 478, and that did get voted in for fire, police, and other safety issues. But when do we start to take a fully comprehensive business approach and not run deficits? That is vital to a thriving community. I personally took umbrage with the young lady who was the second speaker after Todd, who basically threatened the city. If you don't go forward, you're going to lose our contract, and we're going to take our name and logo, which we own, she made it very clear that that group owns the logo, Whiskey Row Off-Road, and we're going to take it someplace else. Having owned three corporations, number one, Whiskey Row is synonymous with Prescott, and I took that statement as an insult to this city council, who has worked with that organization for 20 years, and to every one of our citizens sitting here listening to that. It's interesting that the gentleman, Todd, who is the head of that group, I talked to him outside, I said, are you willing to open up your books so that we know what type of profit you have for-
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Segal.
Thank you. And he said, it's none of your business, which is code for, we're making a hell of a lot of money off these events. I think that the approach that the city council should take, at the very least, would be a cost-plus-return. You have a fiduciary responsibility to the city as a whole, not just to businesses and-
David, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
Very well, our next item on the agenda today is the consent agenda. Does any member of the council want to pull any item from consent? Councilman Moore?
Yes, I'd like to pull item C.
Item A?
C.
D.
C isn't Charlie.
Councilman Gambodier Montoya, now?
I too would like to pull item C.
Okay, we got two for item C. Very well, I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda then.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda item A through I with the pullout C.
Second.
We have a motion and second? All in favor? Please indicate yes on the voting screen.
Pass seven, zero. I'm sorry, five, zero. I'm used to saying seven.
Very well, Councilman Moore, do you want to comment on item C for the consent agenda?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just felt like, as a member of council, listening to a constituent who has had the contract for this facility since 2009, that as a council member, I felt we, as a council, not to override recommendations of city employees, but out of fairness to the current vendor of this facility, to give- of this facility, to give, to postpone the vote on this particular item until more information can come forward. I think putting on the consent agenda maybe forced the issue and didn't allow us to discuss it, and I do have some concerns about the process.
Mr. Legler, would you like to describe the process that the city went through to request proposals and analyze those and make this award?
Yes, excuse me, I would. Tim Legler, Deputy Director of Recreation Services. So last year, I'm going to kind of go through a timeline. So last year, at the end of 2024, we began the discussions as the current contract was expiring. It expires July 14th of this year. There's no option to just extend the contract. We've already done that once. So we came up with the process, we drafted up the RFP in January of 2025. We published it in February. So that's when everybody could look at it. We had a mandatory pre-proposal meeting. And then we opened the bid, excuse me, we opened the bid March 6th. So we selected a review committee, and the review committee was composed of the Recreation Services Director, the administrative person, one person from Human Resources, and one person from Public Works, to give it a variety so that it's not just Rec Services picking the person. We went through the evaluation criteria of the RFP, which is the concessionaire's proposed daily operations and hours of operation, that's worth 30%. Their prior experience, reputation, capabilities, worth 25%. The detailed inventory list of what they currently have on inventory, 20%. The customer service and support, which is 15%. And then the marketing strategy, worth 10%. The proposal tabulations with the reviewers, we also did, let me go forward a little bit. So we also did in-person interviews. So each, there was two companies, each company had their chance to do an in-person interview, where the panel, the Human Resources representative, Public Works, and the two from Recreation, interviewed these people. They came in, presented what they could do. We set up the two interviews, they had it. The criteria on the oral interview was experience and qualifications of the service provider, which is worth 40%. Their key positions, 20%, and project approach, 40%. And the project approach is, how are you going to do this? How's this going to be successful? One of the big things that I want to mention, too, this contract isn't about, it's about providing a service. It's not about making a bunch of money for the city. It's about providing to the, to the public. It's a 10% gross is what the city gets back. So we're not, we're not adjusting. It's just a flat 10%. So after all that was done, reviewer one, two, and three, all ranked Born to Be Wild as the highest ranked, from the oral to the RFP across the board. And then that's what brought us here today.
So I have a follow-up question. Thank you, Tim. In meeting with Matt, the owner of the current contractor that the city has a contract with, he shared with me that in his meeting, that there were two people on that panel of four that stated in the meeting that they had never even read his proposal.
I was not in the meeting, I cannot attest to that. But I would imagine that if something like that occurred, that I would have heard about that from the HR representative.
I don't know, I wasn't in the meeting either, but I, that concerns me, that if there were people on the panel that didn't even read the proposal, that that would be inappropriate for them to be waiting and evaluating the value of that contract with, when we've had a contract with this person since 2009, and here we are, 2025, and he's been providing the service, I think, fine for this entire length of time. I don't know of any complaints. And so I find it fascinating that we would just switch gears after having the same provider for 16 years, who's done, in my opinion, a fine job.
So, so to back up on that, there, I know that, I know three definitely rated, because it was a written thing that they did, they wrote out notes, and they, I have seen that stuff. I don't know that they would weigh in if they hadn't read the proposals. I know that stuff was sent out and was going around. We're working with City Prescott contracts for that stuff. The intent of the, a 16-year-old contract, there's going to be different languages, and and Mr. Young can attest to this, that need to change in the way we're doing the business. In 16 years, a lot of things have changed. So putting out the new RFP allows us to see what is out there. Are we getting the best? Is there something different? Is there something better to benefit the city or the business in general? And then it allows us to also update the contract. We can't just extend his contract because it's expiring. That would be easier, of course. But with all the language changes and changing the 10% gross revenue, it doesn't allow us just to do that. So we have to, by procurement, go out to the RFP.
Right, and I understand that. I have several reservations, I guess, that concern me with the process. And I just feel that if we're looking at a new contract going forward, that maybe it would be best to postpone it, and that maybe the new Parks and Recreation Director should be involved in that process and not somebody that was no longer employed with the city. Because we're talking about this new person being in charge of a contract that they didn't approve and they weren't a part of. So that's one concern. I think the new Parks and Recreation Director should have involvement in the approval of this contract. I had another one, but it'll come back to me.
Do you have any other comments or concerns, Mayor Pratim? Councilman Montoya?
Ted, I think you might have been before me, if you want to go. I just, I kind of want to hear from the city manager. I just, I want to make sure I understand, because I'm a little concerned about, if I'm understanding this process correctly, we had a bid process. And, I mean, I hate to put it this way, because I know it's someone's livelihood, and I have a business, too. I, I understand how it is to lose business, but we have a bid process. There sound like you laid out a scoring process and a rubric around that bid process.
Correct.
Contract was awarded according to that bid process. I assume that both entities involved in that bid process were aware that there was going to be a rubric and had an opportunity to provide all that information. I find it a little bit irregular and out of the ordinary that we would go back and override a bid process. And I think, I mean, maybe the city attorney can speak to this, too, but I think doing so would represent kind of, I mean, aren't there rules around how we engage in a bid process?
There are rules, and the rules were followed. I will say this, ultimately, the decision on who we contract with as councils. So you still have discretion to say yes, no, or something different. So, and we can't take that. But I think that, to the extent that the answer is no, it would restart the process over again, rather than just go in some other direction.
And that's fair. I mean, I guess I just, Councilman Moore, I, I'm curious if you can speak to, do you have specific concerns that you've come across that you've identified where you think the bid process was flawed?
Mayor, may I speak to that?
Yeah, you can respond, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. No, not specifically to the bid process. But I did think of my other thought, and if you want me to wait to share that, I can wait to share that.
Councilman Gamboji, you had a comment?
Couple questions. Timmy, if I remember correctly, there were three different departments on your review committee?
That is correct.
And you had waiting to the different segments?
Correct.
What was the waiting and what were the segments?
So the evaluation criteria? So two different sections, one for the RFP, which was their daily operations and hours of operations. So that's one for 30%. Their prior experience, reputation, and capabilities of performing the job, so 25%. The detailed inventory list, worth 20%. The customer service and support, 15%. Marketing strategy, 10%. Then in the evaluation process, experience, how they sell themselves, basically, experience and qualifications of the service provider, worth 40%. Key positions, 20%, and project approach, 40%.
What was the final score?
Give me just a second. I don't know that I have that with me. What I have is what the reviewers' highest ratings were, and it was across all the raters, the three raters was as Born to Be Wild at the top. I don't have the exact percentage in front of me.
In every category?
Yes.
Councilman Moore, if you want to make another comment?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or make a motion?
Yeah, thank you. So I guess, since Tim doesn't have this information available, maybe he does. Okay, I was going to say, would it be made public through a public process, like public records requests, so that information would be available to the public? That's one comment. The other comment that I have, and it's not with the bid process, but just how the situations have been handled over the last seven years, perhaps. We had a current contract, and we had a contract with Matt's company to provide boat rental at the lakes. But at the same time, he had a contract with the city. Born to Be Wild was operating without a contract to provide boat rentals at the lake this whole time. And he's brought that up on numerous occasions, and they have been continued to allow Born to Be Wild to provide boat rental without a contract. And that just doesn't seem fair. So the question I'm going to raise today is if we're going to approve a contract with Born to Be Wild, is Matt going to get the same treatment and he's going to be able to allow boat rental at the lake without a contract? Because we've been doing that for years for Born to Be Wild. Because we can't have it both ways, or one way and not the other. We've got to be fair as a city. This is a person's livelihood. I'm a business owner, and I think that's why I wanted to postpone this and have more information, because there seems to be some inconsistency here, that Born to Be Wild has been allowed to do boat rental contracts at Willow Lake while Matt had the contract with the city to provide that service.
And I can address that, if I may.
Please do.
There was no exclusivity clause in the prior contract. Because of the rights that it grants.
So then Matt can just go out and start renting boats, even though Born to Be, why not?
Because Born to Be Wild paid $4,500 for a special event permit.
Then Matt could do that.
Except there's a, he could do that at Willow Lake. Right.
Okay. It just doesn't seem, if we have a contract with a provider, then we should honor the contract with the provider, period.
And just to be clear, the contract was honored. The contract didn't have exclusivity. So I understand that that's what council's saying we want, and that's why it is included in the new contract. There wasn't anything like that in the prior contract.
Then I think that's an unfair contract for the new provider to say they have exclusivity, whereas the previous contractor didn't, and he had the contract with the city.
And that's, and that's fair.
Well, it all depends on the terms of the contract. If the previous contract didn't have exclusivity in it, then there wasn't exclusivity.
Then there's no point in having a contract.
Well, there is. If you include that clause in the contract to make sure in the future that contractor is protected by having a clause in it to require exclusivity.
Councilmember Gamboji, did you want me to go over the ratings? I have them before me now.
Would you please?
Yeah. So the proposal tabulation, so reviewer one, and I'm just going to go through Mofun LLC first. So reviewer one rated him at 90. Reviewer two rated him at 88, and reviewer three rated it 77.5. Reviewer four did not rate at all. Born? For, that's Mofun LLC, Mofun.
Tim, can you repeat those one more time?
Yeah. So reviewer one, 90. Reviewer two, 77.5. And reviewer three, 88. Born to Be Wild, reviewer one is at 90. Reviewer two is at 77. And reviewer three is at 100.
Did reviewer four not rate Born to Be Wild either?
Reviewer four did not rate at all.
Why were they a part of the committee that didn't review the contracts or the bid?
They were, they were, they were pulled from that. That's, it was listed as four, and they were pulled from that. The
I think we should start over with the new city recreation.
Ladies and gentlemen, I understand that everyone has feelings about this and probably other items on our agenda, but we have rules of decorum, and we have a process for our meetings. Please do not yell out at our council or at our staff, or you will be asked to leave. And allow our council and our staff to have the discussion. If you would like to speak on this or any other agendized item, you are welcome to complete a blue speaker card and bring it up to me, and you will be given three minutes to speak, just like everybody else that submitted one. Okay?
Well, I can say, when I originally looked at the process, I considered it relatively fair, and both bidders had the chance to present their response to that RFP. And contracts are contracts. If they have clauses in there that allow exclusivity, then, then they get that. If they don't, then they don't. So that may be a component of a previous contract that should have been there, but it wasn't. So now we have a new contract that does include it, because it didn't, it wasn't included before, probably it should have been. But my concern now is if we had a panel of four raters that were accumulating their scores, and quite frankly, the three raters were relatively close, and the fourth raider didn't even rate, then I think we have a problem with the decision on how that contract was awarded. So I think we can keep the same responses, but put together a rating team that actually reads the proposals and comes up with a consolidated rating system that we can rely on as a council to know that it was done in a fair and open manner.
Okay, did you want me to finish going through the ratings?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So on the interview tabulation, Born to Be Wild first, so reviewer one at 90. Reviewer two, 98. Reviewer three, 100. Mofun LLC, reviewer one is at 85. Reviewer two is at 78. Reviewer three is at 90.
No reviewer four.
Correct. So the three reviewers that did this is still the one from Public Works, one from Human Resources, and one from Rec Services.
See, Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I guess what I'm struggling with is that it feels like there was one reviewer that dropped off, so nobody got the benefit of that reviewer. So it wasn't as if that reviewer weighed at one of the others. And I got to be honest, like, we're way into minutia of a bid process as a council. That feels like a level of micromanagement that feels insane to me, frankly. And I mean, we either are going to focus on doing big policy vision and let staff do their job of like, running the city or not. Like, I, I'm sorry, I know it's, I know people are excited and passionate about it, and, and I get it. I, like, like you, Eric, I run a business, and I have lost business, and it has been painful before. But, you know, there was a bid process, and I don't see anything other than there was a fourth reviewer who didn't complete responses, it seems like, for anybody, essentially. So nobody got the benefit of that reviewer, right? Nobody got, nobody got a non-benefit from it either, right? So, you know, I don't know what the circumstances are for why reviewer four didn't put in responses. I don't know that it's relevant. Or maybe you can enlighten me and tell me how it's relevant, but I don't, I don't see the relevancy. There's three reviews, reviewers, they scored it, they scored it, and one person came out on top. And someone doesn't like that. The person who lost likes, doesn't like that they lost, and I've lost, and I don't like losing either. But you don't get a, say, let's rerun the game. That's not how life works.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my rebuttal to your comment is, if we have a process in place for evaluating this RFE, RFP, and one person of the four did not participate, as they should have, then that ultimately skewed the results, because if that person had weighed their scores, maybe the other candidate would have won. And we would have gone through the process, because all four people would have participated.
But it just as easily could have gone the other way.
It could have.
So we have, so it, I don't, that doesn't make sense, Eric. I'm sorry, it just doesn't. Like, nobody gets the benefit of that fourth reviewer. It, it's almost as if having like, I mean, it, I don't know, I, can someone from Public Works come up and talk about the point of having a control? Like, I mean, this is like, you have, sometimes you have a sample size of three people, they weighed it and scored it. The fourth person wasn't there.
Up here, and one of us can't vote on it. Up here, and one of us can't vote on it. That's a problem. There's five of us, we, all five will vote. There's four, all four should have voted. There's a process in place. And, and I would say, Eric.
Okay, I think that's enough. We have to make a decision here. So either we have a motion to postpone or reanalyze.
Mayor.
And that has to be passed, or we decide to make a motion to accept.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You do have public comment, if you would like to take it?
How many do we have? Yeah, I think we can hear public comment. Councilman Kentelme, Mayor Protem Kentelme.
Thank, okay. Tim, I just want to get this straight. We're presuming we don't have a policy on this. Do we have a policy? And does the policy clearly state that there'll be four people in that room?
No. In the RFP, it doesn't state anything. It just gives you the criteria. The selection of the committee process is, there's, we, we went outside the department to get, so that it's not just one department, which we typically try to do when we work with contracts. I don't know if any of them are here. But we work with the contracts to come up with that. That panel's unselected, whether it's three or it's four. If a fourth one is supposed to be there, and then they don't participate, you still have the three ratings. There's nothing in the RFP that says it's going to be four, five, six-member selection panel. We just give the criteria that you're going to be scored on.
Okay. You know, so long as it isn't written in a policy somewhere, and we have violated the policy. I actually do believe Eric is completely right. It's a numbers game. If that fourth person was actually supposed to be there and participating, it, it could have skewed it, either way, either way. But if, if it was clearly stated that there should have been four people there, there should have been four people there then. Because it, it does make a big difference. You know, I've looked into this myself, and I spoke to Matt. Matt's made a lot of claims that I think need to be aired. Now, whether it's going to change the decision or not, but it, it should be heard by the city manager and the staff. Because we can't repeat some of the, the problems there. We've got to adopt a policy, I believe, and it's got to be written in blood, so that the, the playing field is level for everybody, every single person that walks in the door. So I, I would like to review this a little more myself. I, but I do, I'm not saying that this, the way you did it is necessarily bad, but we've got to start to get this down, so everybody knows what they're walking into. Thank you.
All right. Public comment.
Matthew Moritz.
Okay. Starting from when I start speaking, correct? Good afternoon, city council members. Mayor Protem Kentelme and Mayor Good. My name is Matt Moritz, and my family, including my wife, operate and own Prescott Outdoors. The contract with the city is good through July 14th of 2025. To address Tim's first point, in our RFP and contract, we can add up to a five-year extension. Secondly, the thing I'm asking for is transparency, responsiveness, and accountability. These are the three cornerstones of good governance, and at this point, all three have been insufficient for this RFP and associated contract award. First, we have not received our public records requested directly relating to this RFP and contract proposal. We will not be able to appeal in time without this information, as indicated in the RFP appeal parameters, and we will not have the information we requested until after the deadline has passed. It's been more than 20 days with no email response. Second, numerous questions have been unanswered regarding this RFP, and we have requested to speak or meet with the city manager, Dallin Kimball, and we have been told that he would not speak to us before today, though we hold the current boat rental concession contract with the city of Prescott. Three, the competitive process for this bid is in question, as the RFP guidelines have not been followed. Addendum one is not included in the contract here for Born to be Wild, and it indicates in the RF, or in the addendum that, and I quote, "This may be, must be made part of the project specifications and contract documents. Furthermore, the accuracy of this document undervalues and misrepresents the commission's Prescott Outdoors is paid to the city of Prescott in our current contract bid." The bid is also in question, because during our brief 30-minute interview to decide who, what bid would be recommended to the city, two of the five interviewers said they did not read our entire proposal. We want to know why, and also want to know why recorded minutes of this meeting are not posted online. The citizens of Prescott, our Prescott Outdoors family, and you as representatives of the community deserve to know all the facts related to this contract. Due to the lack of transparency in public records, nonresponsiveness of certain departments, and deficiencies in accountability around upholding laws and rules relating to this RFP, we're requesting you postpone the vote on the boat rental concession contract. The easy thing to do in life is nothing. The right thing to do is make hard decisions and follow the path of truth and fairness. In this case, the path is to not let the vote get pushed through without all the facts being gathered. We understand the city council gives great weight to the recommendations of the departments in the city of Prescott, but in this case, we want further review. We're asking for a pause, not a rejection. Both Prescott Outdoors and Born to be Wild are currently operating, and commission revenues are being generated. So making facts public shouldn't have no negative impact on the city of Prescott. Conversely, this will show the citizens of Prescott that you, as city council members, want to make decisions based upon truth and in the best interest of your constituents. I also want to add one last thing. This is the Parks and Rec codes. Chapter 15-1-22 indicates that no commercial operation is allowed to be on city grounds without a contract that is approved and signed by City Council One. The only exception is a special events permit, which is for one-time or one-day use, not continual 365 operation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Let's keep the applause and the comments minimum, please.
David Wheeler.
We'll have decorum during the meetings.
Counsel, thank you for letting me address you today. I didn't found.
Please speak in the microphone. This is being recorded.
Okay. I ran Prescott Outdoors from 2008 to 2020, when Matt took over. So I have a lot of history of this company. I wouldn't say that I started paddling in Prescott as a attraction to this community. What I can tell you is back in 2008, it was hard to keep even the doors open, to even create that business, because people weren't coming here to paddle. And we drove as hard as we could to make that business viable. And by the end of 2004, we'd contributed over a quarter of a million dollars in concession fees to this city. That doesn't count parking fees, and that doesn't count sales tax, plane commissions. And during that time, we had no problems. We kept insurance in place. The city was completely indemnified, and there was not one claim for an accident or an injury, either to clients or to our staff. So all the city had to do was let us operate as good partners, which we were, and continue to contribute the money that kept the park going. We have beautiful parks here, and it takes money to keep them beautiful and to create them. And we were happy and proud to contribute to those. Then, in about 2008, people, Born to be Wild, if we're going to name names, started to show up and rent boats. We went to the city and said, why is someone allowed to come in here and start renting boats when we have a contract? Oh, well, we, we can't stop them because they're online, they're booking online, and they're not conducting the transaction here on the lake. Then we complained, we see them over there doing the transaction on the lake. Oh, well, we'll go over and say something. And what has happened is, this situation had snowballed from annoyance to a major competitor that doesn't have to make the concession payments to the city. We're out there, playing fair, being a good partner. Someone comes in, playing the system, gaming the system, they get to collect all.
You have 30 seconds.
But they don't have to pay to the city. And this is the person, this is the company, that the council is now getting ready to award a contract to. So what does that say to people like me? You play fair, you do it right, you're above board, doesn't matter. The way to win, the way to get ahead, is connive and cheat and work your way in, and you'll get rewarded with the contract. I don't think that's fair, and I think you should dig into how this got awarded, what criteria were actually used, and why it came down to an interview.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
I'm a kayaker. I love to kayak around the lakes here. Whenever I travel, I've rented kayaks in Colorado, Mexico, California. And I've known Dave Wheeler for many years. I've lived in Prescott for 40 years. And I remember when we didn't have any kayak rentals at the lakes, and I remember when Dave got that concession started. And it really enhances our ecotourism experience here. And I've spoken to Matt, and I couldn't understand what the problem was until I got a copy of the contract. And what we have here is a generic service provider contract. This contract used for anybody that does business with the city. It is not a concessionaire contract. So that is why they have been subjected to all these problems. We are trying to turn a service provider contract into a concessionaire contract. If we're going to do business right, we need to have a concessionaire contract for the kayak rentals that has two clauses. One clause that gives exclusive rights to rent to the applicant, and a non-competition clause. That is the problem here. We're using the wrong contract. Thank you.
Francesca De Paris.
I would just like to say how I, I want to trust the government. I want to trust you guys to make the right choices, but when there's not accountability for the past seven years of somebody nearly breaking the law, nearly, and not following rules, how are they, why would you give a contract to a person who has been lying and taking business from the contract that was fairly given to Prescott Outdoors? I don't understand what makes you think that, well, first of all, I would like to say that I don't think that Prescott Outdoors got a proper rating because of the issues with somebody not voting, or two people not reading the proposal. How is that fair to them? Also, again, with the government thing, like, where, where, just because you're going to put something in the new contract gives no accountability to the old contract. Should she be fined? Should she not be able to run a business because she's been doing it without a contract? Like, I mean, I knew that America skews votes, but come on, this is a town, we're supposed to be right and, and loyal, and, and I thought this town was rule followers and respect, but it's not respectful to give a contract to somebody who's been lying, not paying. And, yeah, I, that's, that's pretty much all I got. Like, this is a family. This is a family who's been following rules, and even David, following rules since the beginning. And so I think that should count for something, for the decision of the contract. Maybe there's not enough decisions that go into it, or factors that go into it that should be. So, again, a postponement, like, anything that will give them a fair chance, because that's what they deserve, after the last seven years. So, that's all I got. Goodbye.
Councilman Gamboji, you want to take a, make a comment now?
You still have some comments, Mayor.
I know, I'm going to let him.
Okay.
If you have a question. Ted? I'll wait till all the comments are in.
Joshua, is it Haug?
Good afternoon, guys. First, I just want to say that I understand from a standpoint as a business owner, losing your business can be really stressful. You're trying to deal with everybody's families and everything else, and basically, what I'd like to say is, you know, take a really good look at everything that's going on with all this. We've worked really hard. Mariah's worked really hard with Born to be Wild to get her exactly where she needs to be, and they opened up a contract. She bid on it, and, in my opinion, she won, through the board. I can understand from everybody's standpoint here, but there's been multiple slandering and everything against Born to be Wild. I think that's completely unfair and everything against her. So, that's all I have to say.
My name is Mariah Dilbeck, and I am the owner of Born to be Wild Adventures. And there's a few things that have been said in this room today that I would like to address. Since the start of my business, I did go and talk to Parks and Recreation, and was given permission in 2018 to operate. So everything that I have done, I have done talking to them and getting permission from Parks and Recreation. I have that letter of approval, I can provide that. And then in 2023 or 24, they provided the special use permit for me as well. I have always operated with everything that they have asked me to do, and accommodated the city in every way that I can. I haven't lied or been deceptive to the city in any way. These allegations are hurtful, and I just wanted to address that today. That's all I have.
That is all, Mayor.
Councilman Gamboji.
Like other council members, we've been, I've been involved in trying to understand this situation. And in the spirit of transparency, back in Thursday of last week, I asked this item to be pulled from the consent agreement, so that everybody can hear the process by which the city picked the eventual winner of the contract. I'm a little disappointed what I heard today. You know, it takes me back to a quote from Socrates, when he said, "When the debate is lost, slander becomes the tool of the loser." There's been a lot of name-calling here, and that's, that's not appropriate for this city council meeting. In having the staff present, they gave you a numerical analysis of the, of the two bids, and the number difference was significant. Now, we're, some of the council members, I think, are dealing in conjecture. What, what would have happened if the fourth person voted? Well, we're going to vote on this today, and Lois Fuworth is not here, so what would have happened to the vote? So you have to deal with the facts. We've got rate, numerical ratings, which is a, a, I salute you, Tim, but that's a, I think it's a, you did a good job. Like Councilman Montoya, when I lost my first sale, I was devastated. It's not till you lose a few that you start to get hardened. And you always think it's the other person's fault. But sometimes, the best thing you can learn from a loss is to self-examine yourself. So I, I think we've discussed this, we ought to bring it to a vote and move on.
And Mayor, I apologize, I missed one card in my stack. We do have one more.
Okay, one more.
Jeff Drew.
Jeff Drew, I'm sorry about the earlier decorum, break of decorum, sorry about that. Couple things, one.
Would you lift the microphone, please?
Is this better? This better? Okay. Just a quick one, the noise ordinance, yeah, whiskey row, way too much, way too many motorcycles over there. Okay. I was actually asked to be here by one of the two parties, which baffles the heck out of me. The first one is the current people that are in there. I've had issues with them in the past. Apparently, one time, I was trying to launch my boat, I parked on their hose. Their hose shouldn't even be there, but I parked on their hose. It caused an altercation to the point where there was almost a, a physical fight between three of their employees and me. I'm like, whoa, I was in the army, I know the numbers, this isn't good for me. This isn't good for me. The police department was called. They apparently thought that they were better than everybody else. That was their boat, Doc. No question about it. Okay? So, yeah, I decided to launch at the other ramp. Well, at the other ramp, I ran into Born to Be Wild. I launched my boat, went, had a nice day of fishing, came back, and they had some sort of event that they were pushing people out. It took me an hour to let them get me to get my boat out of the water. I'm sorry, they don't have a contract with you guys. They don't, by the way, I've seen them there just about every weekend, if not several times during the week. So, yeah, I don't know what the story was. They're definitely cheating the system here. I don't like either one of them because I've... And that's the thing. Why call me in if I'm going to complain about you? So there's that part of the contract. You get into the fact that the kayakers, now you've got two competing organizations, and I don't care who's got a license for what. You put that many kayaks on the river. Us fishermen, they're crossing our lines. If I would have had some more advanced notice, I have pictures of them with their kayaks. They're getting their oars out. They're taking my fishing line off of their oars. They have no respect for fishermen. I'm sorry. I don't see where that is part of my experience as far as...
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. When you rewrite the contract, I agree with you entirely. Four people were supposed to vote. If only three, that's an unfulfilled contract. Don't let it pass. Rewrite the contract where the fishermen get a right, the people of the lake get a right, and the people that run the kayak, and I don't care which one of these two get it. If even, do you even need to fill the contract? Either one of them have to be on the lake. Thank you. And please let us know who you're going for.
Thank you for your unbiased opinion.[727.73][727.73](LAUGHTER). You want one more?
Yeah, I just want one more.
All right. Councilman Montoya?
I just, I will, I appreciate the levity, by the way. That was good. I needed a good laugh. My concern for this situation, if we postpone this, what we're saying to future people who win bid contracts is that if you get enough people here to make noise, that we might not give you the bid even when you've gone through the bid process. And that seems really dangerous to me and really bad for the city to set a precedent like that. So there's no way I can go forward with, I mean, again, to Ted's point, I've had people walk out of my building on Willow Creek Road, and it has been devastating. I have lost money in a big way, and it never stops hurting. But you pick yourself up and you do it again. And that's how business works, by the way. Being self-employed is not for everybody. I tell that to people all the time. But if we break our bid process as a city, God help us.
All right. I think we've gotten enough input here to be able to make a decision. And I agree with Councilman Montoya that when we have a clearly defined policy and it's properly noticed and that people can bid on it and those bids are fairly evaluated, then that's what we should rely on. But quite frankly, I think with what I've heard today, I think that process is flawed here. So I think we, having a postponement to review and try to make sure that we have established a clear and fair way of evaluating these two bids and properly award it, then at that point, we should be meeting our standards for transparency and good government decision-making. So with that said, Councilman Moore, I think you're going to make a motion, are you?
I am, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item. Thank you.
Date specific?
I think we should give at least a month. Bring it back in a month. I don't know that two weeks is long enough. There's public request records that haven't been supplied, and there's information, it hasn't been forthcoming.
City manager, what do you think about that? Is two weeks too fast, or would a month work? Is that too slow?
So are we talking about...
Especially when we got a contract expiring July.
Right, so June 10th. Is that right?
It'd be June 10th, but I guess city attorney and I are kind of discussing over here. So I guess we need clarity on what the council wants because if you, the recommendation is not going to be to award the contract, then we need to start the bid process over, which is longer than a month. And that's, but if you're looking for record, I guess we just need, do you want to...
I guess the question is, are we starting over the process, or do you just want a little bit of time to review what's already been done? And if it's that, then we know that we'll get you the information that, or the parties, the departments will get you the information.
Well, especially considering the fact that the public information request that Matt had made and this reference to an addendum.
So I don't have a public records request from Matt for this, I would just like to say.
One of our associates made the request.
Okay. And I've spoken with that person multiple times. So to say that I haven't been in contact with them is not clear.
And this reference to an amendment or addendum to the contract that wasn't included?
Yes.
I think that's a pretty valid point, too. City attorney, which your comment on that?
I don't know the addendum, but we can get, whatever addendum's on there, we can get it to you.
What specific are we talking about, the addendum? Because there's an addendum in both RFPs. In both packages.
Don't ask me. I haven't seen it.
So the copy of the contract...
Can you go up to the microphone and address the council? Thanks.
The copy of the contract that's being voted on today does not include addendum one. Addendum one specifically relates to the commissions paid by Prescott Outdoors from 2020 through 2025. It's been omitted completely from the contract that was just about to be approved today. And in the addendum, it says it must be included in the contract. It also is inaccurate. It misrepresents the amount of commissions. It's inaccurate, and it underestimates the amount of commissions that Prescott Outdoors has given to the city of Prescott, and also curiously includes the commissions or monies that Born to Be Wild has included in 2024 exclusively. So we've given the city of Prescott more than $140,000 in commissions since 2020 in our past contract, and Born to Be Wild has given $8,000 only in 2024. So, and the way that the addendum is written is really unclear, and it's actually misleading because it says "contract holder," not "contract holder and special use permittee." And I would like also some clarity on whether they have a special events permit or a special use permit. Because, again, to the city codes, they both are not in line with what should be happening right now. And I, actually, I want to publicly request a cease and desist if the Parks and Rec city codes are not being followed appropriately.
So I have addendum one before me. It's, I can either read it all to you, or I can tell you that at the end of it, it's saying that you acknowledge this, and it must become part of what you submit as far as the RFP. It does not become part of the contract. An addendum is done when somebody asks a question. The question here was, will historical revenue for the past few years be provided? The purchasing division responded, the total revenues received by the city from boat rental concessions per current contract in the past five years is in the amount of $147,963.11. But that doesn't become part of a new contract. That's just part of the bid process.
That's part of the information provided?
Correct.
That the evaluators would use when they evaluate their decision.
Correct.
Right.
And Born to Be Wild has it in their package.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. For a date specific for two weeks?
Yeah, I think it would be fair for the city attorney and the city manager to sit down with Matt. I think that's a minimum before we meet again.
Well, however they want to choose to evaluate this pause to clarify the issues raised today is up to them to do it. So we have a motion and a second.
Who is the second?
Okay, so the motion is to postpone the decision on this for two weeks while an evaluation of the bid process is conducted by the city manager and the city attorney. All right, that's your motion.
Motion fails 3-2.
No, it was approved 3-2. A motion to postpone.
No, don't we need? Passes 3-2.
There you go.[1264.71][1264.71](APPLAUSE). All right, we're going to move on to the vote. No, actually, we're not doing the vote. We're doing a liquor license.
Actually, we're doing a consent ordinance. It's before the liquor.
Why does that always end up at the bottom of the page, and I end up missing it? Okay, the consent ordinance, thank you.
This is adoption of ordinance number 2025-1894, updating the city's procurement code. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title I, Chapter 1-27, Sections 1-27-10B, 1-27-10C, 1-27-10D, 1-27-12B1, 1-27-12D2, 1-27-12D4, 1-27-12D5, 1-27-12D7, 1-27-15C, and 1-27-18F, and adding a severance provision.
And how many public comments do we have on this one?
There are none.
Oh, I'm shocked. Okay. Do we have any comments or concerns from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the consent ordinance, item 10A.
Very well, we have motion, second. Any further discussion?
Now we have the liquor license. Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license application from Perry Charles Hulmetel. Applicant QuickTrip number 1548, QuickTrip Corporation, location 2292 East State Route 69. The application fees have been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance. One protest letter for the application was received from the Prescott Canyon Estates HOA, and a series of protest letters from Prescott Canyon Estates residents were also received and forwarded to the council in advance of this meeting.
Do we have any kind of a presentation on this at all?
We have no presentation, Mayor. As is always the case with liquor licenses, the council's duty is to make a recommendation to the liquor board.
Correct.
Which is at the state level. They will ultimately be the body that will issue and approve the liquor license. And again, the staff determined that it is in compliance with all statutory requirements. I do have public comment, though, before we close the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll take the public comment before we vote on this.
Thank you for letting me comment today. Prescott Canyon Estates is a community of 255 homes next to the proposed QuickTrip site. We protest QuickTrip's application for a beer and wine liquor store license at this location. Our four-page written protest was submitted to you yesterday. We highlight six of the criteria used by the Department of Liquor in our protest to determine whether or not to approve a liquor license. First, QuickTrip locations draw an undesirable sector of customers, such as homeless people. Granting a liquor license will increase the attraction of QuickTrip to this element. And I want to draw your attention to the first page of the protest that I submitted yesterday for the community. It shows a picture of a QuickTrip store in Oklahoma that they have put what are called bum bumps around the store to keep people from sitting up against the store. We're really concerned that this type of thing is going to happen in our neighborhood. We already have some homeless people who sometimes go down in our creek, and we're very concerned that with a liquor license, we're going to end up with a whole lot more people coming into our community and also hanging around the liquor store. The second, the neighborhood will be negatively affected. Customers will drink alcohol and loiter in the parking lot and behind the store. In our community, this will increase the noise level, endanger the safety of the older population, and reduce property values. Third, QuickTrip's hours are incompatible with surrounding businesses. They are all closed by 10:00 PM, the local businesses. QuickTrip will be able to sell liquor until 2:00 AM in the morning and will be a magnet for late-night drinkers. Fourth, a liquor license at QuickTrip will hazardously increase traffic volume and the complexity of the traffic that Prescott Canyon, Lowe's customers, the church, and businesses across the street, and emergency vehicles will contend with. Fifth, there are enough liquor licenses in the neighborhood already. In addition to the many restaurants that we have, I think there's about 11 liquor licenses within one mile. There are three package stores already, and the tribe is building a travel center that most likely will be selling alcohol as well. So this license really is unnecessary. For these reasons, we urge you to recommend to the Arizona Department of Liquor to not approve QuickTrip's application for a beer and wine store liquor license. And maybe could I finish and please ask everybody from Prescott Canyon Estates who's here to please stand? We're serious that we don't want this to happen to our community. We may be in Yavapai County. We can't vote for you, but we still deserve your respect and support for our community.
Hi, I'm Susan Perkins, and I'm here also as a PCE member, and I've been in the neighborhood for 16 years. And I realize at my age that change is coming, and it's different. I just wish that people would care about the well-being of other people. And when you sell even more liquor, there's all kinds of places, if I need to buy something, that's within a mile. I tend to look at things more as a need, not what you necessarily want. So I'm already distressed that you passed the QuickTrip, which you're allowing to be built by 13 springs. But now you're talking about a liquor license. And is this necessary? Is the business going to go under if they don't have the liquor license? I don't know how many of you know, but there are literally hundreds of accidents on Highway 69 between downtown and the mall. And this is yearly. I have been in two, of which were never my fault, within the last four years. I think that one more place to get liquor is just going to add more problems. And if you can avoid it, saving one life, it could be yours or a family member by not letting yet another place sell liquor. I need to be evidently educated on the need for this. Have any of you got an answer? Yes, not. Thank you.
And we have the applicant, Representative Lauren Properparter. Here you go.
Close enough.
Close enough. Thank you for that, city clerk. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Lauren Proper Potter. That's a handwriting issue, so I won't hold it against you. And I'm here today on behalf of QuickTrip Corporation and Charles Hillmantle, who is the liquor agent on this license. I know you've heard a couple concerns from the adjacent community. I would like the opportunity to address those, but I wanted to make it very clear what the request is before you today. So the request is for a recommendation to the state liquor board, or to the Arizona Department of Liquor licenses in control regarding the Series 10 liquor license application. That is for packaged beer and wine sales. It's not a full liquor package sales license. So the state has two statutory requirements for any applicant that seeks a license. It's that they're capable, qualified, and reliable, and that the best interest of the community is served by the granting of the license. So those are the considerations before you today. The first, that the applicant is capable, qualified, and reliable. Charles Hillmantle was the chair of the liquor board for a couple years. He's served on it for many others. He serves as the agent on over 150 licenses in the state. We've not had any violations. We're very proud of that. Most of those licenses are for QuickTrip. QuickTrip also has no violations on any of their licenses. If there is an applicant that is capable, qualified, and reliable, it is Charles, it is QuickTrip. So that leads us to the second part of what the state statute requires that you consider, which is that the best interest of the community is served by the granting of this license, and ultimately by your recommendation. So as much as we like to think that our customers come from far and wide to visit QuickTrip, the fact of the matter is, we serve the surrounding community. So it does not add traffic to add packaged beer and wine sales to a QuickTrip. People who are merely there getting fuel, sundry items. This QuickTrip is going to have a QuickTrip kitchen, so you might be picking up a pizza, Band-Aids, milk, et cetera, those types of items. It's just one less trip that you need to make to another store. So it quite literally serves the public convenience and the best interests of the community. It is part of our convenience market offerings. I know that there's been some concerns from the community members, and you're very lucky to have a very engaged public here. So thank you all for showing up. We don't always see eye to eye on everything, and I understand that. But the fact of the matter is that we serve our most immediate neighbors, and we look forward to having this community as some of our best customers in the future. The store would not operate without the granting of this liquor license. And because we meet the state statutory requirements for your consideration this afternoon, almost evening, we respectfully request that you make a recommendation of approval to the state liquor department. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Well, I'm going to read the Arizona Revised Statutes, R19-1-702, determining whether to grant a license for a certain location. Item on petitions and testimony from individuals who favor or oppose issuance of a license and who reside in or own or lease property within one mile of the proposed premises. So this body can consider those. Also, effect or impact on the activities or businesses or residential neighborhoods that might be affected by granting a license at the proposed premises. Number 11, comparison of the hours of operation at the proposed premises to the hours of operations of existing businesses within one mile of the proposed premises. So we can consider these issues when we are voting on granting this license, at least making the recommendation to the state liquor board. Now, I've been over on that property, and I've walked it. I know it's going to be extremely challenging to be able to knock down that solid Prescott blue granite that ADOT had these huge pieces of equipment that took them weeks and weeks to be able to just take a small part of it off. But that's going to be your challenge. I also looked down at that high-volume stormwater channel that you're proposing to build a kind of a bridge over it so that you can continue to operate on your plan. And in that channel, I've observed a number of homeless people that were living at the bottom of that channel, and use the huge culverts to connect with the property on the south side of 69 where there's more homeless people occupying those areas. So the concern that the homeowners have brought, that there may be people who are having difficulty handling their alcohol consumption, might have an impact on their residents and their community that's within 300 yards of this facility. So with that said, that will be something that I will include in my vote today. Do we have any other questions or concerns, Councilman Moore?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Could you tell us what the business hours are going to be for sure?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmember. The business hours will be 24 hours a day, so it will be continuously operating. Again, that's, I believe, already been considered by this body as part of another request. And if I could just have a brief moment to address one of the mayor's comments regarding homelessness, that no one is more interested in cleaning up the site than QuickTrip, and having us there is the best way to address those kinds of issues. We pride ourselves on keeping clean sites. We're biased, but we think that we operate a far superior business than our competitors. And we think that being open 24 hours helps us serve the community. You have nurses coming home from long shifts, first responders, and other people who we want to make sure that they're able to come grab a cup of coffee at 3:00 in the morning. So that's part of the rationale behind the hours of operation that QuickTrip keeps. But I think something that's very important to keep in mind is, QuickTrip is an American company, it's privately owned, its employees are its largest owner. So no one is more interested in seeing a clean, successful QuickTrip than QuickTrip employees. So they're highly incentivized to keep the sites clean, and we're very proud of the clean sites that we keep.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this question is for you. Are you sure you mean Andrew?
It's Lauren Proper Potter. That's, you can call me Andrew, that's fine.
So my question is, we're deciding whether to recommend an approval to the liquor board. Is that, Sarah, maybe you can weigh in on that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When was the last time we denied or did not recommend an approval? And what was our rationale behind that?
I would have to go back and look. Never in the last eight years that I've been here, so.
So we have never denied a liquor application before?
No.
I should say the last eight years.
And again, you're not denying the application. You would make a recommendation for the liquor board to deny. But no, that has not happened.
And then, I guess, here's another question. Have we, I mean, if we did make a recommendation to deny this, what is the likelihood that the liquor board is actually going to listen to us?
So the liquor board makes their determinations on issuance of licenses based on state statute. So unless there's a legal reason to deny the license, the recommendation of the board is sort of ministerial in the nicest way that I can say it. They may or may not take it into consideration.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Councilwoman Gamboge.
I'm looking for my legal opinion from our attorney. You read Arizona Revised Statute and said, I think that if you're within 300 yards... Within one mile. Is that one mile absolute, or is that one mile and you also have to live in the city?
No, it's one mile from the location. I should say, not to be pedantic, but it's actually the Arizona Administrative Code that has these breakdowns, not the Arizona Revised Statutes. But yes, it's one mile.
Regardless of your... Right here, Arizona Revised Statutes 4-201, and then recommending the reference to R19-1-702.
Right, the statute approves and grants the authority to the administrative bodies to create the actual criteria, which is then laid out in Rule 19. So it's Arizona.
Okay, if we're being pedantic, I apologize. All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second.
Passes 5-0.
And then I move to approve the recommendation for a liquor license application number 309-851 for a new Series Number 10 beer and wine liquor license for QuickTrip number 1548.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All right, so the abstention is considered an affirmative vote. Now we get to move to our regular agenda. Item 12A.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-1921, GPA 24-001, and Ordinance Number 2025-1891, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the city of Prescott, generally located on the southeast corner of South Marina Street and LaRue Street, from residential single-family SF9 zoning district to multifamily high-density MFH zoning district.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council, Tammy Dewitt, community planner. I don't have a clicker, so I'm...
It's up on the podium, right here. If somebody could get it for her, please.
Okay, before you is a request for rezoning of .6 acres. It's a part of a overall project that consists of approximately 3.279 acres. The current zoning of these .6 acres is at single-family-9 SF9. They're proposing to rezone it to multifamily high-density, which matches the zoning surrounding it to the northwest and south. And then also, as part of this, is a minor general plan amendment from low to medium density to high, medium-high density. Since the April 8 council meeting, the proposed senior unit that reduced the parking, they removed those, and they have redistributed some of the units to have them all three stories now. And so they have adequate parking to meet our parking code without asking for an exception to reduce the parking. So these are the three parcels we're discussing today. They were historically used as the parking area for the old Development Services, Yavapai County Development Services building when it was in use. Since then, it's been vacant since September of 2012. Again, this is an overall of the area. To the east, we do have single-family residential area, and then the rest of the area to the north, south, and west, or multifamily high-density. So this is the previous site plan that we had. We did have, where they were asking to have these senior units, they have since removed that. And they have also removed this building here and distributed the density to the other buildings, so they'll all be three stories now. And here's the new site plan we have. They created some more parking up in this area, and then with the removal of the building down here, we're able to add more parking here. There has been some questions about our code and requiring parking in the back of the building. We do have other sections of the code that pertain to this property. We do have section 6.13 residential protection standards, which requires buffering and screening between the multifamily and single-family. Due to the terrain issues, the elevations on this side of the property, the houses are much higher up. So if we pushed these buildings over to closer to the streets, first off, it creates like a canyon effect. We don't really have projects where we have the road going through the middle of the property like this. That's a city street. Marina Street is a city-owned street. We'd ever really have projects, they're usually on one side or the other, not on both sides. So in pushing the buildings out to the outer edge actually creates that protection and screening for those properties, the residential properties mostly to the east. So they're licking, instead of licking at the park down at a parking area, hopefully the buildings will help screen that, and that's the intent of the residential protection standards, is screening the parking area from the other surrounding residential uses. So they do have enough parking now to meet the parking code requirements. We require one parking space per bedroom plus 20 guest parking spaces, and with the reconfiguration of the buildings, they meet that requirement now. And then the minor map amendment is also included as part of this, to change it from low to medium density to medium to high density to meet the surrounding area to the north, south, and west. So, yeah, those...
Councilwoman Gamboge, you want to ask your question now?
How many, compared to our last meeting, how many units did they propose then, and how many units do they propose now?
The same, 106.
And how many parking spaces did they have then, and how many parking spaces do they have now? Don't tell me you're going to count them.
No, I have it right here. So before, they had 153 parking spaces. Wait, it's 153. It's hard to see from here. 153. And then now they have 180.
So they've addressed the parking issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor Protim, can you tell me?
Tammy, can you tell us all what the Land Development Code says specifically about parking, for requirement for this subdivision?
It's not a subdivision. It's an apartment complex.
You're right.
So it's okay. I just wanted to make sure that doesn't get confused. We require one parking space per bedroom plus 20 guest parking spaces.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I know at the last meeting, if I had to encapsulate what the number one objection was, was the lack of parking. And the developer has addressed that. I know after the last meeting, I started getting emails saying, from people that were in attendance at the last meeting, saying, well, what we don't want is to have them all become a three-story. And I guess I'm of the opinion, they're still at 106 units, they've resolved the parking issue. What I like about the change personally, I'm really pleased that they've removed the building that was at the south end of the property, because I think that was what was going to affect the sightline for most people, was that building at the very far south, and that building is now gone. It's not, yeah, it's there, you can see it at the bottom, right there. That building is now gone, and I think that's a big improvement to the project, and want to point that out. Thank you.
Did you have another question, Ted? No? Okay. Yeah, I agree with Councilman Moore's comments. I would have liked to have seen this as being a 90 unit with just two stories, but I think my biggest concern was parking, and also the removing that one building creates a little more buffer between the people that live down on the street and this development. So I think now at least it meets the zoning and the parking and the other issues, and being able to have a good development in that area. That's been, I've listened to PAC proposals for all kinds of things up on that property, and it still hasn't been developed. and it still hasn't been developed. So being able to bring in some rental units that are close to downtown, I think are going to be valuable for whether it's workforce housing or just more stable rental amounts. I think there's, one of the things that we saw a couple of years ago, if you want to try to get an apartment, you had to, you had to sign a one-year, two-year lease. And you had to be on a waiting list to even get that. But now we're seeing a month-to-month offers. And I think we're going to see a moderation of our rental costs as more supply comes into the city. I mean, it really turns out to be a supply and demand issue. And there's definitely a demand. So now the supply is starting to respond to that. And I think with that, we'll probably have more success on our workforce housing proposals than anything else that committee's been considering over the last few years. So with that said, are there any other questions or concerns? We have public comment, I think.
We do, Mayor. The first one is from Dawn Swetlik.
I'd like to open by pointing out that you've never heard one resident object to an apartment complex located here. The only objections have been the scope of the project and the perceived granting and unnecessary special privileges to the site developer. Let me read from the minutes of two P and Z meetings, May thirtieth, 2024. Michael Taylor Architects representative Johnny Stewart addressed the commission. Stewart, they already have the ability to do three stories, but would like to do two-story units and spread the development out so it fits better into the area. My comment, this was in reference to why rezoning the lot would allow them to incorporate more two-story units into their design. They are now say rezoning would result in every building being three stories. Stewart, there are eight multifamily developments in the surrounding area, and he feels the proposed development would fit well in with the neighborhood for density and building heights. My comment, somewhat true, but deceptive. There are a number of multifamily developments in the area, but none are massive three-story buildings. Stewart, there is adequate water and sewer in the area. My comment, not true. A February twenty twenty twenty-five request for appeal letter to the city from Michael Taylor Architects acknowledges the water demand analysis for the current proposed project exceeds the remaining fifty percent of the water budget. After this, you're going to be asked to approve that. Stewart, the apartments allowed by right, are allowed by right, and this rezoning is only a benefit to the area because it allows them to push the density out and keep the building shorter in height. My comment, no longer true. If you rezone, it will result in all of buildings being three-story tall. January ninth P and Z meeting, Community Planner Tammy Duett stated, if the rezoning was denied, a maximum of ninety units would be allowed under current zoning. Commissioner Riley asked if the rezoning is not approved, will this project still move forward? Mr. Stewart said yes, and if the rezoning is not approved, the buildings will stay as-is and they will use the parcel for parking. Commissioner Riley then asked if this proposal was denied, would the applicant still be able to move forward with everything besides the rezoning of one property? Ms. Duett, Duett stated, that is correct, and this property would only be allowed to be used for parking with no buildings. My closing comment, if you deny the rezoning, the result is not no apartment complex. It is simply a complex of smaller scale and exactly, exactly identical to the developer's own original concept for the scope and size of this project. And there will be ample parking because, as Mr. Stewart said on January ninth, they will then use that parcel that you wouldn't be rezoning for parking. Deny the rezoning. It's one hundred percent up to each council member to decide if the resulting ninety units is an intolerable outcome for this piece of land. If it's still a good outcome for both the city and the neighborhood, and still workable for the developer, follow your own and still, follow your own planning and zoning committee or commission's recommendation and deny the rezoning. It is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Alan Sargent?
Good evening, Alan Sargent, eight oh six Scenic Point, Prescott. I'd refer you to my letter in your packet. It has a picture of a fifty-year-old tree that's sitting on the project. And yesterday, I walked from our city hall up to five hundred South Marina Street, and I reflected on the character of Prescott. I walked past historic structures, statues embracing our Western heritage, and multi-generational trees that grace our streets, provide shade, natural beauty, and aesthetic. I walked along cared-for streets where our homeowners take pride in their home in our city. I reflected on the physical environment we live in and how the homes, streets, and structures are built in harmony with the hills. I passed through the Courthouse Plaza amongst the vendors and artisans that reflect creative beauty. I walked along Whiskey Row and thought about those that had gone before and those that are here visiting to get a sense of what Prescott is. As I approached the proposed building site, I think about how poorly this project generates a collective sense of identity and belonging that everything else in the surrounding neighborhood really does. Chainsawing and clearcutting these old trees, fifty-year-old trees, helps destroy who we are. Bulldozing the hillsides and constructed big retaining walls is unlike anything else in that very surrounding area. Replacing trees that have stood for generations with saplings will take another generation to grow into something as magnificent. It's pretty hard to take. The proposals for a set of rectangular, three-story, box-like buildings with no historic, Western, or cultural character. In fact, they more like, in fact, excuse me, they look more like the new jail with its parking in front than anything else for miles around. It becomes obvious to me that this three-story apartment design is all about the money with little care for the community that it's being placed into. A few years ago, you were asked to say yes to a hotel right along Whiskey Row, and the council said no. It simply did not fit our community character nor a sense of shared identity. I ask that you reflect upon that decision on what this project proposes less than a mile from this very spot and only four blocks from the plaza. Your vision for our community is what's you're voting on today. I thank you very much.
Zachary Fitzsimmons?
Good afternoon. My name is Zach. I'm a Prescott resident and renter of three years. I just wanted to say, it was my first city council meeting about a month ago when I came to attend. And I was concerned and a little disappointed with the confusion over the point of the voting content that we were having. And it seemed like what we were doing is determining specifically a rezoning of this area and what seemed to be a mistake by the initial zoning committee. So it seemed like things started to get hung up on propositions like the, or what the plans were for the parking lot, the building height and its appearance. And these topics grew to such a concern that the council vote got tabled today, when in reality, the content that we're voting on was purely for zoning. So ultimately, I just hope you take this into account that there are a simple vote that we're trying to make here is what it seems, and that's to correct the zoning issue so that this can be moved forward. And you know, since this got postponed, it just, it leads me to believe that we need to have a bit more sense of urgency in getting some of these multifamily buildings put in. So in Prescott, in just five years, so five years ago, the average home price was roughly four hundred twenty thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars, and we saw a forty percent increase to this day to about six hundred thousand dollars is our average price here and specifically in Prescott. And we saw the interest rate go from three and a half to high sixes. The mortgages, your monthly cost could be between, would have started at two thousand five years ago, and now it's four thousand a month. And yet the household income that we're seeing on average across America is only, it was seventy thousand in 2020, and now we're seeing eighty thousand here, which is only a fourteen percent increase. So my point here is that we're struggling to meet the need for young working families here in providing them an option for an affordable living space. And so I hope you consider that this is a great opportunity, and it sounds like you've already made some considerations to the new plans, and I appreciate that. So with this, vote yes and have that zoning changed to multifamily for the young working families. Thank you.
Megan Henwood?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Megan Henwood. I'm here today to provide some encouragement to you. You have been asked to answer a lot of questions regarding this project. Questions straying from whether this project should be allowed to be two or three stories, to is there enough parking? This council has even been prompted to answer questions that range into the morality of renting versus owning. My encouragement is that none of these questions need answered by this council. The question that needs to be answered by you is simply, does it make sense that a section of property surrounded on three sides by multifamily remains zoned single-family? The value of zoning is to uphold the value of property. Rezoning this property presents an opportunity to uphold its value rather than diminish it, demonstrating how thoughtful zoning adjustments can be advantageous. Again, I encourage you to disregard the surplus of unnecessary questions being lobbed your way and re-center on the question of the day, which is not about parking. It's not about planning, and it's not about apartments at large. The issue is about zoning. And I encourage you to vote towards the logical notion of rezoning this section of property to multifamily. Thank you.
Darrell Ivan Brown?
Thank you. This is my first city council meeting, and it was amazingly engaging. I have to admit that. I, I... I do not. You have a very hard job, so I wouldn't know what to do in your case. I'm going to add confusion with my notes here. So I live at five three six South Marina, and I own five three four South Marina. So I'm adjacent on two sides to this property. Those are single-family homes. I'm on the south side. Also, the other south side is a single-family home. So we are zoned high-density. So it is accurate to say, on that part of it, it's high-density, but it isn't high-density because I live there and it's a single-family home. So two of the sides are single families right now, half of the surrounding property. In any case, I am not opposed to this site development. I think some apartments there would be great, and we could use some more housing downtown. I like the direction of the new site plan. It made an effort to address the concern of parking, and I appreciate that. However, when looked at from a common sense reality, the site plan appears impossible to build. Living there, I can tell you that Marina Street is divided into thirds. So there's the front third, which is flat. It's that big flat space that includes the three lots that are in question. And there's a third that is a steep hill that goes up. And there's a third where I live on the backside, which is flat, and those two houses are there. Now I have to drive to my house, so the elevation has to, Marina Street at the back third has to be where I live, which is twenty feet higher than the front third. If you, so that is basically every, it's about a hundred and fifty-foot distance. So every fifteen feet, that's a two-foot drop. IBC code for a parking lot is one foot and fifteen feet. Therefore, it's twice as steep as you can create a parking lot. And that's the, that's the maximum that you can allow by code. So this site plan looks like fiction to me. It's a way to say, we've addressed the parking, but in fact, if you look at it topographically, it's impossible. So I am, as I said, I'm not opposed. I'm not even necessarily opposed to this rezoning. I would just like to do it in a way that the community is assured that we are really getting a reality of parking, et cetera, because this plan can't be built, I don't believe. I appreciate you listening, and I don't envy your job.
Veronica Grace?
Well, I'd like to hear from Gwen or Chelsea on that comment about the steepness of the parking lot not being able to be, meet the standards. Because we haven't looked at any kind of sloping or anything else when we were talking about parking.
Mayor, I can only tell you, because I haven't seen the plans for this development that's reviewed by the city engineer. I can only tell you that it'll be required to meet the standards for parking. We do have requirement for a certain number of handicap, even in multifamily. And there's often a lot of grading in these types of projects that move, cut, and fill around. So, but again, without seeing the plan, I can't tell you how we're going to address that. I can only tell you that we have standards to address that, and we will require those as we go through the process with the developer.
So in essence, what you're saying is with the size of the units and the number of parking spaces, the developer is just going to have to figure it out.
To be honest, Mayor, that's how the process works. The developer hires his own professional engineer who proposes to the city how they will meet our minimum requirements, and then our engineer reviews it to tell them if they have or have not met those requirements. So we will wait to see what those look like, or Randy may have already reviewed them. I can't really tell you. That's not my, that's not my day-to-day.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Veronica Grace. I live at five thirty-six South Marina. I also own five thirty-four with my partner Darrell, whom you just heard from. I also own three rental properties across the street from the site development on La Rue Street. So this is very impactful to us and to our tenants. I will first start by saying that I support the development of this site, and I absolutely support higher-density housing at this location. I do believe that our code needs to be upheld. And I think that a site plan that comes here for you to look at should be largely conforming to our code. Property owners of this site are legally allowed to build a specific maximum number of units, but that doesn't throw away the rest of code. That doesn't mean you get those number of units and all everything else falls to the wayside. It means everything else has to be met, including this parking requirement. And that site plan, I would love for you to pull it up again because I would love to refer to it in other ways too, if that's possible. That site plan, there's no way, if you layer over the topography, there's no way that that can be done. And I will also highlight that the topography is a requirement of what you are supposed to be looking at today according to our code, yet we're not looking at that. There are other areas of the code that are grossly non-conforming. We are required to have parking at the rear of buildings. I appreciate Tammy's comments earlier that there's been a consideration of that, but I just want you to envision Marina Street. And on Marina Street, both sides, a big swarm of parking lot. That feels like I'm at Lowe's. That doesn't feel like I'm in a neighborhood. We have within our code a requirement to have parking at the rear of a building for multifamily housing. It's not a suggestion, it's not a might you might want to consider, it's actually a requirement. So we are non-conforming. And what I suspect is that if those, if those buildings are at the front, like they're supposed to be according to our code, there's not enough room for the parking. That's why it's designed the way that it is. But we cannot throw away that element of the code. We are also not complying with hillside development standards. I've gone back and forth with Ms. Walton a few times about this, and she has advised me that that section of code was considered ambiguous, such that the... me that that section of code was considered ambiguous, such that the team sought legal advice. The legal guidance was that it only applies to new subdivisions. Doesn't apply to anything else, only new subdivisions, which means we have no hillside standards for anything but a new subdivision. I read, I reread, I reread. I don't see these exceptions. I engaged my own attorney. I sought out legal advice and the guidance of my attorney was that it absolutely applies to all site development as is specified in 6.1 applicability. Further, under the Arizona revised statutes, when ambiguity exists, intent governs. If the code is reasonably susceptible to more than one interpretation, courts and municipalities are required to look at the legislative intent. I have a list of case law, if any of you are interested and some reading later. We must consider this legislative intent and Section 6.8 clearly applies to all site development. It is verbose and rambling about the beautiful mesas and vistas and the buffers that our hillsides create and how it makes this Prescott special. It clearly applies to this site and it makes it impossible to build even 90 units and meet the parking requirement. The third point I'd like to make is that we've decided we don't need a traffic impact analysis at this location. Again, a non-conformance with our code. We've determined somehow that there will be 60 to 72 vehicle trips per day during peak hours for this, for this apartment complex, yet there are gonna be 106 units potentially, so, I don't know, 130, 140 people live there. We're targeting working professionals, but only 30, 35 of them are leaving every day. So we don't need a traffic impact analysis. No, no Amazon deliveries, no maintenance crews. We're really looking at just 30, 35 people leaving every day. That's it. I also highlight that under 6.4, 6.14C of our code, a traffic impact analysis is required when the sensitivity, and this is verbatim, sensitivity of the adjacent neighborhoods or other areas where the public may perceive an adverse impact. I've been through many forums talking about this. Every time, somebody brings up traffic concerns. It's in the minutes from the last meeting even. It is required and yet we're not doing it, so we are non-conforming. My final point, these are market, these are above-market rate apartments. Please, please get in touch with this, with this, what is actually happening in the rental community in downtown Prescott. I own multiple one and two-bedroom units. Mine are fully renovated. They are very nice. I rent at what is probably the high side of market. I don't get these rates. I don't get 1,700 for a one-bedroom, 2,400 for a two-bedroom. I don't get that. When this comes in, it's going to bring all the rates up. So before we high-five and think, okay, we added, we added more housing, we added more housing, let's be clear, we're adding more above-market rate housing to Prescott. In closing, approving this rezone means that you are accepting a site plan that is grossly non-conforming to our code in very significant ways. I don't accept, we'll figure out the parking later. I don't accept that. I recognize that your decision to consider this application is a legislative action. Appeals would be going to the Superior Court. I'm not asking you for any special favors today. I'm not asking you for a rezone. I am asking you to apply our code to this decision to ensure that every element of our code is conforming in this application. Parking at the rear, hillside development standards require a traffic impact analysis. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Falls?
Jeff Falls, Haley Construction. I kinda wanted to support the project, but also I wanted to really echo what the young people that are sitting in front of me said. And as an employer of people in that age group and a father of two people in that age group who are really struggling to find a place right now, I just, I really think this is something we need and thank you for your time.
Lenora Bateman?
I'm coming, Sarah. I'm Lenora.
Oh, you're speaking for Lenora? Okay.
I'm AI Lenora Bateman, speaking for Lenora, that you might know her as Lenora Bennett, owner of Bennett Oil. And she couldn't be here today and asked me to read a short message to Mayor and Council. So good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Lenora. I'm writing today to express my full support for the proposed apartment complex development on Marina Street. As a member of this neighborhood and someone invested in the vitality and growth of our downtown, I believe this project will bring meaningful, long-term benefits to Prescott. Increased housing availability, the need for quality housing in downtown Prescott is growing. This project will help meet that need by offering new rental opportunities for families, professionals, and retirees who want to live in the heart of our community. Smart infill development. Instead of spreading development further into surrounding open space, this project builds on existing infrastructure. It's sustainable approach that supports walkability, reduces sprawl, and encourages responsible growth where it's needed most. Economic benefits. Most residents downtown mean increased support for local businesses, restaurants, and cultural events. It contributes to a vibrant year-around economy and helps preserve the character of Prescott as a livable and thriving city. Neighborhood revitalization. Well-designed apartment communities like the one being proposed raise the standard of development in the area. They signal investment care and a commitment to progress that complements the history and charm of our downtown district. I recognize that change can be met with concern, but I encourage the council to look at the bigger picture. This development can be part of a future Prescott that is inclusive, forward-thinking, and welcoming to the next generation of residents. Thank you for your time and service to our community. I respectfully urge you to approve this project. Lenora Bateman. Thank you.
Now, Michael Enders?
Well, Lenora was a little shorter than I am. Mayor, Council, staff, I'm not gonna take up much of your time because the thunder that I was prepared to exude was just taken by Lenora, but I just wanted to emphasize several facts. One is it is bringing additional, what I believe is affordable housing closer to downtown. With the rezoning, it's compatible on the three sides. It really affects 12 more units than the existing zoning would provide, and that's 12 more people or families that can enjoy the location being closer to downtown. So I would urge you to approve it as submitted. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor and Council, this is not helping my Achilles tendon that has a crack in it or a split or whatever. Sandy Griffiths, I live in Prescott Valley. Most of my energy and time is spent in entire Yavapai County and I have seen and been involved with many projects that have been very, there's been lots of opposition and support. And I'm here today to express my strong support for the proposed Marina Street apartment complex. This project represents a valuable opportunity to address the growing demand for quality housing in a community while also contributing to our local economy. It's thoughtfully designed. It provides much-needed residential units that will support a wide range, a diverse range of residents. And those are the young professionals that you heard from today, families and seniors. As I made a statement the last time, our seniors are leaving their large homes. They're not going into care facilities yet. They still want to live in a vibrant downtown and this Marina Street complex is a great location for them. So I feel this project aligns well with our community's commitment to sustainable growth and urban revitalization and I thank you for your positive support. So good evening.
Jonathan, is it Atten?
What it boils down to, and Mr. Mayor, I'm glad I heard it come from you, is housing. We need housing in the city of Prescott. We need housing for my daughters. We need housing for my employees. We, we just need housing. So let's take emotion out of this approval process and get the rezone done that meets the city guidelines and codes. Thank you for your time.
My name is Marty Verrier. I'm from, I live at 559 Wilderness Point. Sorry, but sometimes when I walk. Anyway, I know the project of parking has been brought up, but I would like to reiterate that it's not the parking issue of, or the amount of parking that we were concerned with, but the fact that the parking is in the front rather than in the back, which, again, this was Code 2.4.32B. This will create a very unsightly view and especially for the residents around there and it will create a strip mall effect, which is not a residential neighborhood. The dumpsters are going to be in the front. Again, this is very unsightly. We have seen dumpsters before and there's nothing nice about them. That's all there is to it. The Marina cul-de-sac has very, very limited overflow parking as well as the surrounding neighbors that have difficulty even parking on their own lots. Lastly, something that has not been discussed is the fact that there's limited parking will create a bottleneck through, for ingress and egress accessibility to emergency vehicles. This is not a wide street. It's a dead-end street and it's very short and I can't see how, in case of an emergency or fire, how this would impact that neighborhood. You've got people above, people to the south end, and you've got all the occupants who are going to want to exit. And I, I don't know what the total length is of the street, but it's very limited and I, I feel that this could turn into a serious liability or lawsuit for both the developer and the city if this creates this bottleneck. The developer has contended that in order for the project to be viable for them, they need to remain at 106 units. That is well and good, but that is at the expense of the neighborhood. Planning and zoning approved the rezoning of the three lots from single-family residential to multifamily parcels. And that was approved with a 90-unit project at only two-story buildings. After that meeting, after all this was approved, the developer proposed a new plan with three-story buildings and 106 units. The plan was denied. Please do not override planning and zoning's vote. I will emphasize, I too am not against having these apartments. What I would like to see is a more homogeneous appearance so that it would blend in our neighborhood. They now want to add three-story buildings.
You have, you have 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. Well, they would now want to add the three-story buildings and what it's doing is there's no added vegetation or trees and I am very concerned about the grading, what it's going to do. I live right there. Are they gonna come right up to my house? There's been no talk of that. So those are some of my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Alvin Burke?
My name is Alvin Burke. I live at 559 Wilderness Point in Prescott. Thank you for the opportunity to present our thoughts. Let me make it very clear. None of us are denying the possibility of an apartment complex. Contrary to what you've heard, we are not demanding that this project not go forward, but we have some concerns. The previous speakers have been very eloquent and have spoken to the issues and I'm not gonna repeat them or waste your time. What I will say though is, should you deny the rezoning of those three parking lots, you don't deny the 90-unit development. We've, we've been talking about this project for probably close to a year. Planning and zoning wisely said no to the expanded project, yet you override that decision. Some of the issues have been resolved. The potential illegal designation of some units being just for seniors has been withdrawn by the developer. Additional parking has been added. Other code violations noted in letters to the council have not been addressed or simply ignored to the benefit of the developer. The traffic analysis has not been completed. Contrary to comments, there is no public transportation. Those that are going to be living in the complex are not workforce housing. The rents are at market pricing. Those living there are going to be professionals, doctors, nurses, schoolteachers, firefighters. They're not gonna be walking to their, to their point of employment. They're gonna be driving. You can have 106 apartments. You're gonna have maybe 150 cars. You're gonna have much more than 60 or 70 trips back and forth. Look at what's being built in Prescott today. Look at the apartment complexes just recently built. Look at 2051 Willow Lake. Look at the verandas on Miller Valley. Look at the apartments just completed on Valley Behind Fries. What do you see? Do you see apartments that look to be everybody's hometown or do you see stark, modern, tenement-looking apartments? Lastly, what legacy will each of you leave after your short time in office? Will it be an attractive apartment complex, covered parking, native shrubs and plants in transition zones and throughout and with a building architecture representative of everybody's hometown? Or will it be as planned, a stark, low-investment, tenement-appearing, cramped apartment complex with an asphalt, open-air parking lot with the appearance of a strip mall or a Motel 6? A blight to our historic- 6, a blight to our historic downtown residential areas for decades to come? That is your decision. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Zach and Megan for speaking. You were right on target. What you said was appropriate. The issue that we're discussing today is adoption of resolution, a request for a rezoning from single-family to multifamily high density. That's the agenda item. It's not about parking studies or traffic studies. It's not about hillsides. I'm sorry. It's just, that's not the zone, that's not the agenda item. What's on the agenda is are we going to approve this zoning change request? And I feel like we've been off topic for an hour. I'm sorry. We've been off topic. It's a very simple agenda item. Do we approve the zoning or not? One of the speakers just said that when we met last time, it wasn't about the number of parking places. It was. But we've moved the goalpost. Now it's where the parking is. You know, what's it going to be next time? We're moving the goalpost. The issue is, do we either approve the zoning or we do not approve the zoning? Thank you.
Councilman Montoya?
I withdraw with my request. Eric said everything that I was going to say.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Mayor Protam.
You know, with all due respect, Eric, I slightly disagree because I, one of the things, in order to pass this, I do want compliance with the codes. And I do have some questions, and I think maybe the architect is here. I see him. He can come up and answer a couple of questions. I do have, with the, just so you know, the maps that were given don't have dimensions on them. And as a builder myself, I was very curious how we were going to escape the mountainside building codes. I live a block and a half away from there, and I had to comply with them. And I have a single-family residence. So how are you going to deal with the grade difference in the south part of that on the east half of it? Because that's a, that is a large jump. And I know I've talked to Mark Van Wermer a little bit about that, too. But now that you've shoved this all in here without any dimensions, are you just leaving that mountainside alone, or are you going to take it down?
So, excuse me, Michael Taylor. Thank you, Mayor and Council staff. First off, we don't have a topographic map yet to even make these discussions. Whatever design we ultimately land on has to be approved by city staff. We have to meet the hillside ordinance. We have to meet the parking requirements. We have to meet the zoning code. Those things get addressed during design and during plan review. All we're asking for today is the rezoning of those three lots.
Well, when this information is presented to us and we take a look at it, I'm going to believe what I see. It's been given to us, and I don't know how that's going to fit on there. And I, before I approve this as part of this group, I want to make sure that we are in, and I'm quoting here, substantial compliance with the site plan. So I don't want to have a bait-and-switch thing. It's happened before, and I'm not happy about that. The other thing is, are we, Chelsea can answer this maybe, are we accepting this traffic analysis by our city engineer as that will go on record, that that is our accepted traffic analysis that's included in our packet? The traffic impact analysis on page 124, are we, is that what we're supposed to go on, that we are accepting that they have passed and are approved on the traffic analysis?
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. So on page, I believe it's 124 of your packet, maybe, I think that's the number. It's cut off on my page. But the traffic engineer for the city of Prescott did look at this and make comments relative to whether a traffic impact analysis was warranted. And he determined that the figures that came in for the proposed traffic increase were well below the, well below the 100 peak hour trip thresholds as outlined in the LDC, the Land Development Code for the city of Prescott, that triggered the traffic impact analysis.
So that'll be included in the final packet with, and will be accepting that traffic analysis?
When the construction documents come in, the city traffic engineer is added to the review, and he'll provide his approval at that time.
Okay. What was the exception to allow them to have the parking in the front and not in the back as the code states?
Sure. So there are two sections of code, and two sections of code that deal with that in particular. One is in Section 2 for use restrictions. The other is in Section 3 for the actual district recommendations. And there's a little bit of discretion between the two. One, in the use section for multifamily, it says wherever possible, the parking is supposed to be in the rear. In Section 3 for the multifamily high district standards, it says to the extent possible. So a little bit of discretion there based on the proposed site and the specific surrounds. Again, those are items that'll be determined when the actual submittal comes in. And the project has determined with their engineers and the further analysis that's required, those will be reviewed during that time.
Okay. So nobody at this point has given them a pass on that requirement? That could change as we move along.
It could.
And it would be at your discretion?
It would be looking at the site in total and working with each of the teams and the requirements based on the general engineering standards, the Land Development Code. So there is a review process for those at the, at the construction submittal.
Okay. And I do want to thank you very much and Mr. Van Wermer for handling the traffic, I mean, the parking issue over there. As I said, I live in a block and a half away from there, and I understand how it can be downtown. I've been down there for almost 20 years. And that was very, very important to me. I'm not in favor of having the codes not followed. And they're there for a reason. And I think that we've gotten ourselves into some trouble in the past by disregarding things that should have been followed, especially in the historic area. So anyway, I think that's it for you, but I do appreciate you coming up, and I wanted to find out about that grade.
I would like to make a comment, if I might, Mayor Protam. The whole discussion about putting the parking in the back of the buildings might be a valid concern, but here's another way to look at it. If you look at our site plan, the parking is facing the parking on the other half of our project. If we do flip it, now all that parking is on the perimeter where it's adjacent to all those residents that live nearby. And I don't know that that's really desirable.
Well, except it's tucked in the back where you've got that large grade difference.
Right. And those.
So nobody's really going to see that.
They're looking out over a sea of parking.
Right. And then you've got the YM, or whatever it is, the Boys and Girls Club on the other side?
I'm just saying that I don't know that it's a real benefit to go one way or the other necessarily.
Well, let's take a look at that. But thank you. I really don't want to have this get passed on a rezoning if down the road, these other things are just going to get accepted. And now that you're aware of that, and I'm not opposed to the project at all. I think we do need it. Again, I live in the area. So do a good job on it. Don't build a fortress. Build something pretty. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if there are no more questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion now.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2025-1921 and move to approve Ordinance Number 2025-1891.
Second? A request for a rezoning from Single Family 9 to Multifamily High Density and a minor general plan amendment from Low-Medium Residential to Medium-High Residential on a total of 0.16 acres with an overall project area of 3.278 acres for a proposed 100-unit apartment complex. We have a motion in second. Please vote.
Passes 5-0. Next is Item B, WSA 25-009, a water service application for 13.24 acre-feet per year submitted by Michael Taylor Architects. On behalf of owner YH Development Properties LLC, location APN 109-13-001D, 500 South Marina Street, eight parcels comprising 3.5 acres.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brian Reese. I'm the Water Resource Manager here for the city of Prescott in the Community Development Department. So Water Service Application 25.009 is for this proposed 106-unit multifamily apartment complex. It is located at the end of Marina Street at La Rue, as shown on the map, the vicinity map on the, on the screen in front of you. So per the amended 2022 Water Management Policy, Water Service Application is required for a project and reviewed on its estimated water usage. Michael Taylor Architects, who's here today, provided us what they demand analysis for this particular development, which is shown right here on this, on this particular site plan, which is not the current site plan. So, yep. You saw the current, the current site plan on the, in the last presentation. So based on the, on the 106 units provided from the Water Resource Management Model, an average water use of 0.12 is estimated for each of the units in this complex. That gives a demand for the buildings of 12.72 acre-feet. The project is, landscaping proposed for the project is approximately 0.6 acres. And using a multiplier of 1.5 acre-foot per ADWR, that gives an estimated use of 0.85 acre-feet for the landscape. The previous building on the, on the project had an average use over the last 10 years of 0.33 acre-feet. So deducting that from the usage of this proposed project gives 13.24 acre-feet a year. So per Water Application Guideline Number 14 of the Water Management Policy, no single water service application can be approved for greater than 50% of the remaining water in the semi-annual budget. If a project does request more than 50% of the remaining budget, it has two options. It can wait until the budget is renewed and there's sufficient water for that application, or it may request an appeal of the 50% rule. The applicant shall demonstrate that the benefit to the cities, such as job creation, wages, sales tax, economic impact and other benefits to the city if they appeal. The applicant has requested an appeal of the 50% rule with this project. So in your agenda packets.
Brian, how much is left if we apply the rule?
How much is left if we apply the rule? Right now, the available is about 19.5 acre-feet is left in the residential budget. So if you were to take half of that, is that what you're kind of asking? Yeah, so we have, we would be able to, a project wouldn't have to go through a pill. It'd be about eight, about nine, 8.5 acre-feet would be the amount that would be allowable without a pill at this point in time. So in your, in your packet, the applicant has provided a letter of appeal where he's provided the benefits that they believe is, that this project will bring to the city. The applicant is here, so if you have any questions on those, on those benefits or would like to have them speak about them, we could do that. But in, in summary, 106-unit multifamily apartment complex, estimated usage for the buildings of 12.72, estimated landscape usage of 0.85, and previous usage of 0.33 for a total demand estimate of 13.24 for this water service application. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
What page is that economic analysis on?
Oh, thank you. 158.
Yeah, I think it's a minor adjustment, considering we're probably talking about, maybe about four acre-feet difference. Do we have any questions or comments from council on that? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve WSA 25-009.
Second? Motion in second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, Brian, you're still up.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2025-1923, approving updates to the water management policy related to hazardous materials and pollutant discharge.
Okay. So back on January 7th, in the Water Issue Subcommittee meeting, the Water Issue Subcommittee requested that our water resource staff look at bringing hazardous materials and pollutants addressed into the water policy. So water resource staff looked into what the current programs and situation with the city is, and we started to research both, two programs in the city. The city's wastewater pretreatment program and the city's municipal separate storm and sewer system, the MS4 program. Both programs that are, the city operates in order to make sure that we're minimizing the potential for hazardous materials and pollutants in the wastewater system. So through the course of the next two Water Issue Subcommittee meetings, we worked with the Water Issue Subcommittee to bring in front of you the, the language that is being proposed to update the water policy in order to incorporate this information within it. So, so first program, the wastewater pretreatment program is a program that's administered in accordance to the Environmental Protection Agency's Regulations for General Pretreatment Regulation. This, this particular program has goals of preventing discharge of pollutants that could disrupt wastewater treatment process, cause operational issues, result in violations of discharge into the city's wastewater treatment facility. It ensures that harmful substances don't bypass treatment and enter either surface waters or groundwaters, and reduce exposure to toxic substances and ensure the safety of the people that are working in the wastewater treatment facilities. The city's municipal separate storm sewer system program has the goals of reducing discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent possible, protecting water quality, and satisfy the appropriate water quality requirements of the Clean Water Act. So within the water policy, Section 3.0C, we went ahead and added the information that's shown here in red on the pretreatment program. As you can see here, it describes the program, where it falls within its regulatory environment, provides those goals of the program, and talks about how that, those goals are achieved through monitoring, permitting, sampling, and various other activities to ensure that the program is meeting its objectives. And we added a new Section 3D for stormwater, and again, describing the MS4 program, what its goals are, its operating authority, describes the, the six minimum standards of control that the city has. that the city has to, has to show every year to Arizona Department of Environmental Quality that we're, that we're effectively running this program. So that, that language is proposed to be added to the water management policy. Section 5A1, we added a language here in the applying for water service section that notifies the applicant of the, the requirements for hazardous substances and make sure, to make sure that they understand their responsibilities for compliance for both of those programs as they're going through and applying for their water service application. The water service application itself, the information in red was added in to identify hazardous material and pollutants that may be contributed to, by a proposed development. So the area in red, which I'll go to here, is a little bit larger, was added to the water service application form. You can see that the four service categories there, food service, industrial, dental facilities, and vehicle service facilities are all high-impact potential projects identified in the pretreatment program. So those are identified specifically. And then another category for unique projects to capture anything like that was put in there. Next section provides information about the regulatory code, our regulatory codes that apply to both the MS4 program and the pretreatment program. And then a section where an applicant can identify any type of pollutants or hazardous materials that might be added to the, to the city's sewer and storm sewer system. And then finally, the last part is an acknowledgement from the applicant that they understand these requirements, understand that these programs exist, and that they will be required to, to meet all of the, all the requirements of each of the programs, and that they understand they'll be responsible for any cost associated with meeting those requirements. So with that, if Resolution 2025-1923 is passed, we will go ahead and add these changes to the water management policy. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Brian, are we requiring, are we doing these analyses and testing already? And we're just adding it to the water policy for the city?
That is correct. All these programs are in place. At this point, what this would help do is, is provide a mechanism to understand if, if a project is going to need to comply with a pretreatment standard or what might be identified in the MS4. We can help the applicant understand right up front what those requirements might be, get them to the appropriate people who administer those programs, and also have an understanding of what's coming, what's coming in the development that might contribute to those programs.
This kind of centralizes the, the concern in this area because they have to apply for a water policy or a water allocation.
Everybody does.
And by doing that, then they have this additional information required when they apply for that.
Correct.
What are the enforcement policies and what are the penalties involved? And how do we apply those?
Well, each of those, each, each of those programs has, has penalties and has various regulation that allows for enforcement of them. I don't have those direct penalties and, and requirements offhand. I'm not responsible for either one of those programs directly. However, yeah, there are enforcement in each of those policies in code to make sure that we have an ability to make sure that they're-
Who is, who is responsible for that?
So pretreatment program is under the, underwater operations utilities department. And the MS4 program is under the environmental services department in Public Works.
Well, we just happen to have Public Works here.
And still awake. So Mayor and Council, enforcement of those ordinances is done through city code. So there are both either civil or criminal penalties that go with violating those codes. We work with the city attorney's office if we feel we have enforcement. But to be honest, we try to get voluntary compliance. That, that's our number one goal, is voluntary compliance first with codes. And if we're not able to do it that way, then we seek the assistance of the city attorney's office, and we either charge them with civil or criminal violations of city code.
That's a good policy if we follow it.
And we do.
Yeah?
We do, sir.
Can you give me an example of one we've done?
Yes, sir. We are currently seeking compliance from a, I don't want to call them out specifically, but we have a manufacturer in our industrial area that's over near the Deepwell Development that routinely violates city code by the products that they produce are blown through the neighborhood outside of the fence. We attempted to work with them for over a year. We thought we were making some progress on that particular case, but we were not able to bring them into compliance. And so we sought the assistance of the city attorney's office, and they are currently seeking civil violation against that particular business for continuing to violate by letting their product leave their site and enter into a neighborhood. So that's just one example.
I will say that it's actually a criminal action.
Thank you. So that one's actually being pursued as a criminal case. But that's my point, is the city attorney's office takes the lead. Once we're unable to achieve voluntary compliance with any violation, we hand it over to the city attorney's office, and we work with them at that point to achieve compliance. So yes, we do do that, and I probably could tell you five or six more.
Well, we just hear so many different code violations that never get enforced and never get penalized and are always being looked the other way. And it takes multiple, multiple attempts to try to get somebody in compliance. They ignore it. And in the meantime, they're causing a lot of, a lot of havoc and a lot of problems where they are. So I'd like to see a little more expeditious movement in those areas.
Sometimes, Mayor, when we're seeking compliance, it can result, it can be very costly. For example, when we have illicit discharges from a business. In other words, they're putting things down the drain that they should not. We have to work with them. It can take a while for them to be able to financially meet that obligation. And so we work with them on interim conditions and things like that until they can meet the ultimate goal of meeting codes. So again, we try to work with people to get them where they need to be rather than be the heavy hand of enforcement unless it's necessary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's see. Mayor, I see you on the, on the board here.
Finally. Thank you. Brian and Gwen, I'm really happy to see this. And I think it's not a minute too soon because now that we are aware of some of the, well, especially with manufacturing nowadays. Is this something, because I have had to deal with the ADEQ in the past. Is this some, some requirement that they've also started recently? The, especially with the wastewater treatment stuff? Because I know they've really tightened up the last few years. So did you follow what they had, their guidelines, or?
Yes, yes, Mayor Protem. We, we do meet all of our ADQ obligations for cross-connection and contamination. That's all in Chapter 2-1 of city code. I, I can tell you there's over 150 sections of 2-1 that are related to this particular topic. So I won't go into the details of all the different ways that we have to meet the regulatory requirements of ADQ. But yes, and, and that code has been in place since the early 2000s, late 1990s. But over time, the city has become more stringent about making people comply with those codes.
Yeah, thank you. I know they've been really hitting hard on the sanitary sewer systems or wastewater treatment plants, and I was just wondering about that. My other question is on mitigation. Are you going to, is, is the city going to be requiring involvement in the mitigation of some of these problems? And will it be through filtration systems? Or how will some of these people with, specifically wastewater, how will they be able to mitigate that? Do you have a guideline?
So typically, when a business comes to us as a new, a new business, they have to go through permitting. And when they go through permitting, these codes are, are enforced. So for example, if you build an automotive shop, you have to have a sandal separator. If you, you know, you build, you have a facility that discharges things into the sewer that exceed our regulatory levels, you have to treat those at, at the point that it comes into the system. And so we address them as they, as they come through the permit process.
But what about retroactive with businesses that, obviously, you just talked about that? Are you going to be able to go back and with this, once it's adopted, and make some of the older businesses comply if, if we have some of those, and I'm sure we do?
So let me be clear that it's been adopted for over 20 years. We've had these regulations in place for over 20 years. And so we don't go back. But when people come in and they change something, they must meet the current code. So they have to upgrade their systems to meet our current obligations.
Thank you.
Counsel, one more?
Just a quick question, Brian. When you head down vehicle service, does that include car washes?
Yes. Yeah. Car washes would have to go through the pretreatment application process. It's pretty extensive, and it asks for quite a few different chemicals that could be introduced into the system.
Hearing no other concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-1923.
Second.
We have a motion and second? Please vote.
Mayor? Passes 5-0.
City Clerk, does that conclude our meeting today?
It does indeed.
Okay, we'll end this with a quote from a famous American, George Washington Carver. "Resolved to be tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the striving, and tolerant of the weak." And the, sometime in life, you'll be, you'll have been all of these. Meeting is adjourned.